Excellent.
I'll be rolling.
Thank you. He's got his hat around.
Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska Act is with the Secretary to the Board of Education. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the following: legislation, standard response, hurdle call and threat assessment, OSER's actuarial study, NSCA/NCAS, if I'm correct, NSCAS, strategic plan and board governance. Roll call please.
Cassidy. Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
Crackey.
Here.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith. Snipe. Snow.
Seven present, here.
Thank you.
Kimra Snipe informed us that she wouldn't be able to attend today's workshop. Mr. Smith also has mentioned that he will be running late, and I believe Ms. Tracy Cassidy as well. I would entertain a motion to excuse them. Is my mic not?
You can just leave it.
Okay. Fair enough.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Dr. Holman. Roll call please.
Snow.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. Alrighty, so moving on to our first item, board governance activity. We have Linda Richards, and she will be our facilitator for this activity, and she'll also be attending the entire workshop when we have board governance issues come up throughout the entire workshop. It's your floor.
Thank you, Mr. Snow, Chairman.
We have our call at 12:30.
We're gonna push it back a little bit.
We were able to do that, he's able to do that? Okay.
Just for that record, so that we, Mr. Snow and I talked prior, I will be excusing myself during that call. I think that's a conflict of interest. Okay? Okay, welcome Omaha Public Schools Board of Education members. How is everybody?
Pretty good.
Oh, come on, it's awesome, right? It's a great day to be an OPS School Board member. Did you ever think you'd hear Linda Richards say that? Come on now, we're gonna have some fun here today. Okay, so in talking with Dr. Logan and Mr. Snow, thinking through a little bit of what you've been working on as a board, talking about, having conversation about board governance, I was able to obtain just a little bit of background information, understand that you've been working as a board to really learn what your needs are as far as a board in way of both board governance and kind of strategic vision. So by way of my background, for those of you who don't know me, and Nancy's totally recused from this, because boy does she know me, is that I have been on the Wall Street Board of Education, this is the start of my 24th year. I have served as your officer for the Nebraska Association of School Boards, and have been in various committees and representations along the way in that capacity. I have had the opportunity to be involved with a couple of other boards of education as they go through some board conversations about board governance. And so I just wanted to spend a little bit of time with you here to kick the meeting off, to kind of set, hopefully set the tone, hopefully get you into the mindset of what you need to be thinking as you go through the remainder of the meeting here this afternoon. How many of you are familiar with this or have seen this diagram, the Board Leadership and Success? It comes to you from, if you're not familiar with that, the key works of school boards through our National School Board Association. A couple of you are nodding your heads. It's a phenomenal framework that I think probably in the last at least 20 years of my board service that I've experienced, gives you kind of the handles of what it is as a Board of Education member. These are the areas that you should be thinking about, these are the things that are in front of you on a regular basis and should be a priority for you. And so our conversation today, as I looked at your agenda, you're pretty much covering off on, in some way, shape or form, the full spectrum, but you're definitely talking about vision as you talked about strategic planning, you're talking about accountability as you have some conversations about NCAS, and then relationships, which is what these retreats and these sessions are really designed to be about, but they're also for, not only internally for you, but to understand, get a better understanding of what your role as a board member externally in those relationships can be and should be. I obtained a copy of what I think an activity that you did most recently to establish some board norms. Are you familiar with these? These are in your packet, you do have a handout of this PowerPoint as well. I just want to walk through those again because I think you did some really good work here to establish kind of, here's what our expectation of our board governing and how we're going to, as we move forward in conversations together and in the work that we're gonna do together. You have a remain focused on student achievement through actions and conversation, you have respect the uniqueness of each sub-district while maintaining a district-wide perspective, listen empty, monitor personal biases, seek to understand, clearly communicate and follow the chain of command process, value the past but focus on the future, speak respectfully to all, support board decisions when they are made regardless of individual vote, and hold each other accountable for following these norms. Does that sound, does everybody recall having that conversation and talking through those?
Yes.
As you've had time to reflect on those, are any of those, you have questions about any of those norms, or do you feel pretty confident that you understand what the expectation is? Ben, go for it.
You know, I kind of talked about this last time, too. I'm trying to think who the facilitator was. I posed a question, how can anyone here hold anyone, each other accountable? This is not your typical workplace situation where there's that ability, right? There's only one group of people who can't hold us accountable, as far as I know, Nancy and I. Right? And so that to me is always...
It's hard to hear you.
Oh, okay, I'll try to speak up. I don't know how we can force anyone to be engaged and accountable. I just, that's just such a challenge because it's not a traditional workplace environment where that, I mean, I have to say it, you have that right determination, it's always, I mean, you're held accountable at work, there's expectations and there's consequences, but we have no consequences for that. You know, being accountable or engaged, and so that's, to me, seems like something that's always kind of a challenge for me.
So do you have, just to follow with a question and then invite conversation about that, because I think it's a healthy conversation to have, right? It's difficult in an environment where you don't, there's really not a structure that you presently have, known to me at least at this point, where you have that way to hold that accountability. So are you, do you have a board member code of conduct?
Yes.
Do you have a policy for that?
Yes.
Okay, and so in that code of conduct, do you have, do you have any teeth? And what I mean by that, do you have sanctioning capabilities?
There's a censure capability.
Censure, yeah, okay. And so has this board ever used that?
No.
No. You're not gonna do it.
Do you think you would?
If a board member probably actively, I would say, tries to, trying to find a better word, sabotaged the board or the district, so...
So an intentional...
Intentional.
Act.
If they're intentionally trying to disrupt the work of the district.
Okay, and how does the board define that intentionality? What would that, what would that process look like? So, because what you're, what you perceive as intentional, I mean, does it have to be blatant? Like, okay, there's like...
It has to, because everyone has to agree that it's intentional and what they're gonna do, but the question is, my version of what I think is intentional might be different from someone else's.
Sure.
So how do you have that conversation and that dialogue where the board establishes what is intentionally trying to sabotage the board?
Right, right. Do you think there are steps before you would get to that, that you, having not exercised this before, Nancy, what do you, are there steps that you would, you would go through?
There would be some kind of conversation or conversations before that would happen.
Okay.
And I think, I guess I'll just toss out, I think, you know, last night I sent an email and yesterday morning I called and had a conversation with Mr. Ray and Dr. Logan about making sure that this was recorded and so wanting to hold the board accountable to being responsible and being transparent to the public. So I think you can do that in other ways.
Sure.
Better, you know, let's have, let's be healthy about this, let's think about this, maybe people are unaware of, you know, transparency or those kind of things.
Right.
So as board members, when we see something that could harm all board members, not just ourselves, then we should reach out and say, what can we do to be more responsible in our governance?
Absolutely.
So that's, I guess, I would, I would think that that would be the very first step, right? To be, to hold each other accountable for governance, and then if there were one offs, obviously have conversations.
That's a good point. Do you feel the structure of how you do that communication exists for you? So you talked about emails going, is there a formal structure in which that, that happens or that conversation about those concerns happen? Back-to-chain-of-command kind of thoughts? Do you have, internally as a board structure, are officers reaching out, talking to the other, to the other board members to ascertain if those concerns are there? What does your, what does that look like for you?
So I would say if there's a, I haven't had a concern or somebody come to me individually saying that someone's trying to sabotage or undermine the district or the board, but let's say if there's a board member that isn't upholding to what they agreed to, meetings, whatever that may be, then that comes to the board officers, and then we have that discussion with that individual, and we keep reminding that individual that, you know, if, if they don't, then obviously we have to find somebody that can fill it, and really just having that frank conversation of, you know, don't commit, don't say you're gonna commit to something if you don't have the time. Just be upfront with us, be as realistic as possible. So if you sign up for this event or something, whatever it may be, just try to hold true to that, because if not, then we're not gonna try to schedule you to be at the next one because you're not reliable.
Yes, Nancy, go for it.
Along with that, people saying they will be somewhere where there is actual funds or money involved, and somebody's paying for something, and then you don't show up and you didn't call ahead of time, I think that can be a problem. I have...
Sure, it's a, yeah, being accountable for those public dollars, right? And we're all, as district, we're all running on tight budgets, we want to make sure we're expending the resources, you know, where it's appropriate and necessary, right? So do you feel like these, when you look at these norms, what do they mean to you? So back to Ben's question about, well, how am I gonna keep anybody accountable or hold anyone accountable? I don't, you don't work for me, you work, you work for the community if you're elected, right? So there's accountability, there is ultimately every four years, an accountability check, right? That the community has.
It's technically, it's every, it's every two years.
Yeah, tech, I mean...
It rolls where...
It does, inside the board, but you as your individual, yeah.
In two years, if you don't think you're accountable, you have to go and tell the people that elected you what you've done.
Yeah.
What you've tried to do, and typically if your community doesn't support you, someone else will, and if their message resonates, they will replace you.
Absolutely, so there's that out externally.
Right.
But now, now we're here, we're functioning as a board, we're trying to make decisions, we're having conversations as a board with a leadership team, right? Our administrative team. How do we, how do we navigate that? I mean, these are great words, right? How do we make that come alive?
You know, I've thought a lot about it, I just don't see that there is a way. You cannot force an elected official to be engaged, do the hard work, be prepared, go to every, every meeting that they've signed up to go to, there simply is, unless I'm missing, that's why I'd love to hear an answer, because I've thought about this more than anything, and there simply is no mechanism by which to make people do the job and be engaged and to be accountable, it does not exist.
So what about mutual relationships? How about back to that respect for others?
So give you an example, the way I approach it of holding accountable, like you said, mutual relationships. So if it's my job to try to meet, I try to make it very, a big point for me to meet with every board member, have that opportunity to meet with them at least once a month. So if I have that opportunity to meet with them, we have that connection with, and outside that connection, we can have just frank conversation, which isn't a board meeting structure as...
Sure.
You know, would you say chain of command, whatever it may be, you're communicating directly with that board president or that board member, so when I'm having board officers or having my conversations with the superintendent, superintendent can't meet with nine board members at once, but she meets with board members individually, I meet with board members individually, and we have that discussion on what's going on in the district, how people are feeling, and that, I think that's how the accountability, in my opinion...
Yeah.
Comes through.
Works itself out, yeah.
But, I mean, sometimes it only goes so far.
Sure, what do others, what do others, what do others think?
That makes sense.
I'll catch up.
You're fine. So we're talking about the norms that you guys established, right? Kind of kicking off with, you know, do these resonate? What do they mean to you as a Board of Education member? Ben asked a great question, how can anyone who's in this role really have, be able to hold anyone else accountable? The accountability's through the electorate, how do we hold each other accountable in here? We're talking about mutual relationships, respect for one another and the service, right? I have, I have not always agreed with colleagues, shocking, human nature, but there's a, there's something that I think we're accountable to, even when we're not accountable to one another, and that's the mission. Would you agree? If we are all tethered to the mission of what it is we're about, that's the accountability. The results provide that accountability. Taking Ben's comment a little bit further and saying therefore, hey, you're engaging in this at your level, right? You're accountable to your, you guys are in sub-districts, right? So you have folks that, that are looking to you. What did they elect you to do? Yeah, Dr. Logan?
I was just thinking about, I don't think all accountability has to be punitive, right?
Correct.
I think accountability, pointing things out that need to be done or need to be considered for the board, which I regularly see amongst board members, I think is a way of holding folks accountable. It doesn't necessarily, it's not hierarchical, it's just, you know, these things need to be, you know, these needs, these things, you know, as we talked about even this meeting, these things need to be considered as a point of, you know, serving the public. I mean, I, you know, I felt that that was, that was, that was a way to do that. I mean, and I think, you know, you know, we, some things were considered because that was done, and I felt that, that's a, that's a way, that's a way of accountability. I just think, first of all, it depends on how you define it, you know, loosely or more broadly, but I do think there are, there are ways, I think if, if the only way we say, if we could define it very narrowly, and the only way we define it is if we can take that ultimate sanction, which you just talked about.
Yep.
Which makes sense to me. I'm not, you know, I, I can see why many people define it that way, and that is a way to define it, but I just wonder about, thinking about a broader, to get us to the point where I think you want to be, which is really like, hey, if you sign up for something, you should come, if you, you know what I mean? If those are, you know, to, if you commit, if we have reading to do, make sure you do, you know, some of the things that you want us to, because you've talked about it, being prepared and stuff like that, but I just, I just wanted to, those are just some things I was thinking about, because I do understand exactly where you're coming from, and I just wondered about thinking about it a little, not loosely is, is not the word, because I do think, things change as a result of folks pointing things out, and those were really around accountability.
Right, and, and I'll just respond to that by saying, I think there's, in this discussion, there's been some conflating between ways to get where we want to be in accountability, which is one way of looking at it, and then the punitive was your topic, and so, yeah, I think you described it well in the middle, which is, which is good, because, right, first of all, there's no need for a board, there's no need to have punitive accountability in a traditional sense, right? It doesn't even make sense. But, so, yeah, if we could just find a way, through any way, to get to the type of accountability that you're talking about, it'd be wonderful.
Do you think that that will come about as those relationships foster? Don't you, you know, I, I feel a sense...
Good, that's a way to get that.
Yeah, right? I, I feel a sense of obligation to colleagues, right? Like, I don't want to let you down, right? And so, but to build that, there is, there's work that you have to do to make that occur. The best work you do is when you're working in strategy and you're working in mission and, and you're working on those, those heavy lifts, right? Those things together, and then you want to be at those meetings and meeting those obligations, or you want to be doing the reading or the work that's assigned because it's, again, gonna further the mission, right?
But at some point, traditional accountability is important.
Oh, totally is. It totally is. And those, that process, I think, happens as, as you work together, right? And it's working for something alongside one another that can really build that. It's building muscle to do that, right? And you've, the structure maybe hasn't been there for you to do that, and what I'm hearing you say in all of that is, let's put something there so that we can work towards that. Is that fair? Welcome, Rick. Glad you're here. Okay, so components of board leadership. I'm telling you things that you know, but I want to reiterate the importance of them because the conversations that you're going to have as you move forward, I think really necessitate us all really understanding what is it to be a board, and quite frankly, why am I doing this? Do you wake up wondering that sometimes?
Every day.
I should see some nodding, because if I don't, then you're not in it for the right re, right? What are we doing this for, right? Board members have the power to make things happen and influence the organization. Have you made something happen in this organization through influence, through talking, through, have you had that occur?
Yes.
And how does that feel?
It's good.
It should, it should feel rock solid, awesome, right? That moment where something's occurring, I'm having an influence here, in a positive way, right? Board members are responsible for the five key factors that drive a board's governance. That's that circle that we, that I just showed you, right? Those are the areas, those are in your purview. What are your statutory job, what's the statutory job that we have as board members? What are the three things we do?
Hire a superintendent.
Yep, hire a soup.
Policy.
Policy.
Policy and budget.
And budget, right? Those are the three things by statute we do.
Evaluate the superintendent.
That's right, evaluate, hire, yep, it's part of that process. You got it. So those are the three things. And I remember thinking, young in my board career, well, that's kind of lame, I want to talk about curriculum, right? Have you had that, you know, I don't want to, I want to do this, I want to do, it's all in there, in the right spot, when you engage in it through the role that you have. I see Nancy nodding, you've done this a little while, right? You get to those things as they tether back to the three primary responsibilities that you have, right? Board members create the infrastructure, the processes, systems and structure in which the board, the district can succeed. It is on you, right? You're setting that framework of how this is going to look. You're gonna, later in the day, you're gonna have a conversation about strategic planning. One of the most important things we do as Board of Education members. Absolutely. Choosing her, right up there with that, right? Strategic vision for where we're going, absolute utmost importance. Would you agree? Excellent. Board members provide the vision, inspiration and direction to attract and motivate others to be successful. Is it, does that statement there, somebody, somebody give me a response on that. What, what's your response to that last one? Board members provide the vision, inspiration and direction to attract and motivate others to be successful. Go, Nancy.
You probably have different thoughts and ideas that you would like to forward or have the board forward as a whole, and probably in some of the conversations that can come out, or even at board meetings, when you are okaying or the budget or something, you might say, I'd like further information, or something like that.
Yeah.
So that everybody knows where you are coming from.
Yep, absolutely. Motivating, that, encouraging that conversation to occur. You said it earlier, when you picked the phone up or sent an email, was your, what was your motivation behind that?
So the whole board is successful.
The whole board is successful.
The whole board is successful.
Right.
Well, and, and I look at that as providing, to attract, I think about, well, you're not gonna attract a superintendent if you can't provide the inspiration of, hey, our kids are wonderful, you want to come meet with them, right?
Right.
And, and then just to motivate your teachers, because your teachers, whether we like it or not, they keep a close eye on what we're doing, right?
Absolutely. They're the front line. Whatever you do impacts what they're doing.
Right.
Right? Direct...
And if you have, if you have kids in school, they get to come home and bring you all the teacher comments, right?
Right, right.
I have lots of them over the years.
Absolutely.
And if some of them are interesting.
Some of them are interesting, yeah.
Right?
That's right. Okay, moving along. First exercise, I would be a horrible, horrible facilitator if I didn't make you do something, right? So let's do something. How do you define board leadership? Now I want you to just take a minute on your, in your packet there, I want you to jot it, jot down, how do you define board leadership? And then next to that is, what is the difference between board leadership and visionary board leadership? Notice the additional word. Yes. Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna leave the rest for the SAT ladder part, since we got a little start. Okay? Okay, who wants to share? Give me a response to how do you define board leadership? Go for it, Nancy.
I think that we want to lead the district in the right direction, be it by the, the board leadership, and the way we get there is probably by being aware of the needs to be tackled and the things that are said to us, and then sharing the community concerns that come to us as they surface, whether it be the media or others out in the public arena.
Okay, very good, Nancy.
And there's probably more than I would even...
No, that's awesome, great start. Anybody else want to answer that question? How do you define board leadership?
I'll take a stab at it, probably from a little bit different angle.
Sure.
Because I think, you know, board leadership probably encompasses a couple of different things. Being able to make decisions on your own, and making the right decisions, and being informed and engaged. Another, which I think is lacking, is to, to be the voice of that board, not your own voice. You know, there's been so many times where I've, I've asked, why did this happen, why did this happen? And the only answer I get, this probably happened a dozen times over the last two years, well, isn't that why you're like board leaders? No, it's not. It's not to make decisions without engaging the whole board. So there's kind of a balance. So in some, in some decisions, sure, that's, that's what board leadership is for, but another is to be the voice of the entire board. And that's very important.
Okay, very good, very good answer. Yep.
I said board leadership is having the engagement, motivation, awareness and making decisions and helping to lead the group collectively and hopefully successfully towards goals and expectations.
Excellent. Goals and expectations.
I like that.
Love it. Let's go on to the second one. What is the difference between board leadership and visionary? What is the difference between board leadership and visionary board leadership? Nancy, go.
It's just so easy. It's, it's knowing what needs to be done and being anxious to get going with it. I mean, that's how kind of I do. It's kind of easy. Know what you need to do, want to do, and you just can't wait hardly to get going.
To get going. Okay, very good. Go ahead.
I wrote that it's about knowing that our actions as a board are, is going to impact for years and years and years to come.
Okay, so that, we're visionary, that extra step.
It's not just the right now, it's years.
It's the future. Yeah, go for it.
So when I think about board leadership, I think about student achievement.
Okay, beautiful.
That's really what it's all about.
That's a really good, yep.
And so when I think about visionary leadership, I think about taking the three components that we're supposed to do.
Yep.
Hiring the superintendent, setting the budget, and driving policy. And those three things around, how does that impact student achievement and success in a, you know, futuristic.
View.
I mean, right.
Right.
How do you get there? How do you get, how do you get our kids, where they need to be with the three responsibilities? And stay focused on those three and not becoming distracted by all the clutter that happens in our lives.
Yes, because there's a lot to get distracted by, right?
A lot of clutter.
That's right. Anybody else want to contribute? Okay, I'm going to close this section of this because we're going to lead you guys on to the essence of visionary board leadership. Board members have clear visions, but without the power to translate that vision into reality, they are not leaders. So you can have a vision for where, what needs to occur, right? And, and there are nine separate visions. It's when we collectively pursue a vision, right? That we end up building the reality that we need to have, right? Translating a vision into reality has to do with motivating and gaining the support of others and channeling efforts into a common direction. That is your task. Some days, it feels like herding cats. Would you agree? And they're wrangly cats sometimes, right? But it is translating that vision. You know the day-to-day function around here. You live and breathe. You know the alphabet soup, right? That's what we, we have, all these acronyms that when our public comes and sits in a meeting, when our press friends come and they sit in a meeting, they are swimming in acronyms, right? Yes?
And something pertaining to that is what I used to, and I think it's, I hope everybody doesn't hit me in the head if I keep mentioning some things. But it's really important that we, and by being hit in the head, I lost my track. What did you just say?
So that we, that we focus is translating that, that vision and all those words and all that stuff that we in education have.
The acronyms. If you don't define what the acronym is in the beginning of the section of what the paragraph or the item is on the agenda or on anybody else's agenda, you can read through things in the paper. You go on and on. You keep looking. You try to find what it was.
Right.
And some, sometimes I've gone to the computer to put it in to see what it is.
Figure out what it is, right? So imagine, right? We, we cannot make assumptions. It is our job.
Yeah.
To translate that, to, to bring it into reality for, for.
I think that's extremely important.
It really is.
You need to understand what you're doing with the rest of it.
Yeah, to then cast that vision and take that common step, right? Board leadership, visionary board leadership is vision and its relationships. And we've talked about that so far here today. I encourage, at this point, I'm going to step aside so that we can move into the agenda. We're going to come back to this. We've got a little later part. We're going to talk through this. I'm placing these seeds in your mind right now because I want you to keep thinking about what we just talked about as we progress through this agenda. These things, these responsibilities, these tasks that are before you as a board today, think about them through that lens of board leadership, visionary board leadership, right? What are my responsibilities? What are they again? Superintendent.
Policy.
Budget.
Budget. Okay? Filter things through that today for me, okay? Simple X's and O's, but let's, let's start there, okay? All right, I'm going to hand set this here. I'm going to recuse myself. Don't you love that big word?
Yes.
I know. And Mr. Ray will come and get me.
Yes. So the legislative matrix is on the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to table D two through D six until a regularly scheduled board meeting.
So it's a workshop.
That pin is in bounds for the conference.
We make a motion. I think we can make a motion to table this.
So what's your motion again? I'm sorry.
To table item numbers D two through D six and reschedule them for a time that we can have a regularly scheduled board workshop. This was planned to be a board retreat, so I'd like to table those items and take a vote on it.
There's a motion on the floor to table D two through D six. You guys have your agenda, which is SRP, the OSER study, NCAS, and strategic plan. It's a workshop. And when we do publish this to the community, it is published always as a workshop, so.
Are all of the, I have a question. Are all of the documents on the agenda?
Yes. They're not all uploaded onto the agenda.
But they will be.
Sure.
As long as we have all documents and we have transparency, are we violating anything? Open meetings wise?
That, the scorecard and OSERS. But the OSER's document, if I'm correct, is already public because that was presented at an OSER's.
Workshop.
Workshop.
Well, just for clarity, that, that has nothing to do with why I'm asking the table.
So from my perspective, and I know there's not been a second, so can we even talk about that?
Table ends are traditionally not debated.
So, Megan informed that the proper motion would be to postpone this until a certain time. So, just remake your motion.
So I move to table items on today's agenda.
Postpone.
Correct, postpone. Today's agenda is D two, D three, D four, D five, and D six to a further date or traditional 6:30 PM board workshop and board meeting time, whether it's Monday or a future date.
So I'll second, so we can have conversation.
Okay, so discussion. Yes?
I'll just be brief. I think, I think I've already outlined this to everyone on the board. This, this is very different than what we normally do. We don't have board workshops and board meetings at noon on the fifth floor of the Tac Building. This had been planned as a board retreat for several months. I was expecting a board retreat. I don't know how many people on the board looked at the agenda or when they looked at the agenda or when they found out it was not a traditional board retreat. But this is, we have a couple retreat type items on today's agenda, but the public, I think rightly, expects us to hold these meetings in a time and place that is conducive for them to attend. There's no one from the public here today, and that's not a surprise. And we have several, several of these things are some of the most important things that are in front of us. And to have it, to have a board retreat transformed within two days of it taking place with this type of important information, I don't feel there's a good precedent. In fact, just for a little history, which some of the longer tenured board members can tell you more about, they used to have committee meetings like this. And there was a deliberate decision to stop doing that. We, I guess there's committee meetings, but this is, it's not good to have our, our school board meetings on Friday afternoons on the fifth floor of the Tac Building. And that's, that's my, really, my only objection.
So particularly to SRP is not a full overview of everything that's going on. Obviously, there will be a, a update to the entire district, but this was more in protocol to the board of what schools are doing and what happens in that boardroom if something happens. So threat assessment in the boardroom. Like I said, D four is, I think, kind of fits under that legislative piece, especially when you have the legislative call that is today and since we tried to merge that together since we have some important items that will probably be, need some addressing by next week. The NCAS is also on the agenda, if I'm correct, for a regular board meeting on Monday. So this was to basically get from board members what do they want to see on Monday and how they want to see that. And the strategic plan, it's not saying this is our strategic plan. It is looking at different variations of strategic plans and having board members brainstorm of what direction of a type of strategic plan we want. So I'm saying most of that, you saying where you're saying you need a public discussion where the public is there. I don't think the public really is focused on if we're going to go a Tulsa strategic plan or Oklahoma City strategic plan. I think they would probably be more concerned with the substance that we set in that strategic plan and when they are invited or when they can add their input for that strategic plan. I think this was just laying down the scope of direction of how we want a strategic plan to look. Ms. Scotty.
So just going down them, D two legislative discussion. Clearly, if it's just John Lindsay giving us information, I think that's fine. I don't think we can give him any feedback because clearly that's action and there's not action scheduled for this particular meet. So we would just be able to listen and I don't think, because there's a quorum here, we can give any feedback to him on any way, you know, any direction for moving because we would have a quorum and there's not action scheduled. On the response protocol, you know, I'm not really sure. I always think it's good to have those things be done at a board meeting where people can hear, here's what is happening. And we've been pretty light on topics at board meetings for quite a while, so that would be good. On the OSER's piece, I would say from my perspective, I'm certainly getting plenty of feedback from people on how they feel. And I think from a transparency standpoint, it's important when you have, this, this is pretty weighty stuff, right? These are pretty significant conversations. Obviously, we can't give any feedback on what we like or don't like because this, again, there's no action that can be done here, so we can hear, but I don't think we can provide any direction. I do think that from a transparency standpoint, again, board workshops should be held in the evening so that people can come if they want to, and I do think people would be interested in that particular topic. I think that NCAS, I just see that tying into the presentation on Monday night, so I'm not really sure why it's here because I think it's always healthy from an overview standpoint to have the public see the same thing that we're going to see on, you know, whatever we're going to see on Monday night. If this is an overview of that, I guess they can re-repete that on Monday night, but I think the public, especially with NCAS being so new since, you know, we've moved from NISA, it's important for the public to get, whatever we get in D five probably should be covered at the board meeting. And I think from a strategic plan discussion, clearly, this is a workshop now and so the strategic plan discussion is probably, I'm fine with that being part of a workshop piece. But again, I don't think in D two and in D four, anybody's going to be able to give feedback because that would be perceived as action that's probably, I think that's a little bit risky. So that would be my comment.
I have no idea whether the board members, how we all feel, yes or no, or this is dumb. I know that when I was on the board again before, the discussions were really, really thorough. And the reason they were thorough is because we had the opportunity to work with each other and anyone who wanted to attend those daytime meetings when the facts would be brought to us by staff and they would tell us exactly what that was. Well, what's with that reading? Why aren't you doing that? Or what are we doing here? And if you wanted more information or something, then they gathered it and came back again with the information. You were so well informed. There was no way you couldn't be well informed. This way, and like the last couple, pull it out if you don't know it or whatever, I like the thoroughness because then I really feel that I can tell the community. And we did that. We have already talked about that. We've talked about it length, that sort of thing. I just, that, there's a real transparency with that. And this one isn't as out there for me as the other was. Now, yes, you do accumulate things. You do have history when you accumulate things, but that's good because then you can go back and see, didn't we do that? What, I don't know. It just seems so surface here, the way this is done this way to me. I don't know how it was with Ralston, if he has daytime meetings ever or other people do that. I don't know what they do. But this is a big district and there's a lot of information out there. There are a lot of programs, just by going through the, on the Board of Education page and getting into different sections. The one thing I found out, really getting in there yesterday, the little circle of everybody's school, click here for more information. I kept clicking all of those and they didn't open up. And that really frustrated me terribly because that's where I think we are lacking. It wouldn't be easy for, I had to go, I have to go to Google or Yahoo to get in the Omaha Public Schools Belvedere, for instance, and then it comes up to me. But I can't do it on the webpage, not now. I, there used to be a way to get into it, but I don't know. It seems different now. Maybe they, I don't know.
It's recently been.
But they, I think they do it.
Yeah, I agree. I've tried to.
But isn't that frustrating to people out there in the public?
I'm sure it is. Real quick before we go to Mr. Perlman, Megan, in-house counsel, can we give feedback in this meeting? Could you? Is it okay for board members to get feedback? I believe we said that we can't, I mean, obviously, we can't vote or make motions, but we can give feedback. Is that correct?
The, the meeting has been properly noticed. Everyone is here as part of a normal intro, a normal item that's placed on the agenda that's under discussion. You can certainly discuss it. You can provide feedback to it. You just simply can't take a position on that particular bill. And so without taking that position, you're within the confines of how the meeting has been noticed.
I would agree with that. No positions.
Ms., then?
I don't know if I can really add much to it. I just, we had a board retreat on the agenda or on the calendar for four months and this, I mean, it's not even, it's not even trying to be a board retreat. It's, it's a board workshop and I'm just having a hard, I still, as I'm sitting here, I don't understand how that happened, other than maybe we just didn't plan and prepare for a board retreat. I, I hope we don't have another board workshop or board meeting in the middle of the afternoon.
Any other comments from colleagues on the board? There's, there's a motion, second, to move, if I'm correct, D two, D three, four, five, and six to a later board regular meeting or workshop after six, six o'clock, six thirty, I believe. Yes?
So I'm going to vote to go ahead and continue on today as long as we're not giving positions, as I said, on D two and D four. And, and as long as D three and D five show up on the board agenda, hopefully for Monday night because I think that's pretty important, so that the public can hear the same thing that we've heard. But I, I would concur with, and I think the point is in the future, if we're going to do really what I call data dumps, because D through, D two through D five are kind of that data and working through things, they should be held as workshops so that the public can also be part of. be held as workshops so that the public can also be part of the data dump. And if we're going to call something a board retreat and focus on board development, board governance, board relationships, which I think are really important things, that's a wonderful thing to do. So it's my understanding that board officers kind of changed it up. I'll move on for us to continue on today, but I would appreciate in the future, retreats, day retreats, and workshops are available to the public after six.
Duly noted. Anyone else? Comments? So, Mr. Ray?
So the motion is to postpone D2, D3, D4, 5, and 6 to a regularly scheduled board meeting. First was made by Mr. Pearlman, second by Luanne Godding. So voting begins with Mrs. Scotty. Mrs. Scotty?
So no.
Holman?
No.
Crackey?
Pass. I know I shouldn't. I don't know which way to go with this.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Smith?
No.
Snow?
No.
Cassidy?
No.
Six, snow, one pass.
Motion fails. We have a lot of stuff that we have to do in a short amount of time, unfortunately, as a board in a district. But some of these things are pressing issues when you're talking about, obviously, OSERS or NCAS, strategic plan. But having the discussion and not taking a position on it and starting that, I think is something that we need to start. So moving on, is John Lindsay available?
So he's available now for the next twenty-five minutes.
Does he think he can present and get through in twenty-five minutes?
He can hit some of his items.
Okay, so make sure you let him know so he can put his most important items up front.
Can I just say two things real quick about, there are two things that I wanted to talk about. The D3, the SRP and threat assessment was really about making sure the board is prepared for an emergency should somebody make an attack at a board meeting. So that's really what it was about. We have done presentations to the public already on that, about what's going on in schools. We'll talk a little bit about that. But it was, it was focused at this, at the board being prepared for a, an emergency in the boardroom. The second thing about NCAS, we have a presentation on Monday on NCAS that is comprehensive. And the focus of the activity for board members today is really about you being able to dive into the tool that all of your constituents can see but probably don't use to, as a reference for you to be able to work with your constituents. And so I just wanted to make sure that one was really more of, the one that's on Monday is really about the policy level that is appropriate for, and this one was just to give you an opportunity to, to do that, to do that information. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of, because we felt the tool is, was, could be really helpful to you. We did it with our team here. I just feel like everybody who's working at a, in a leadership in the district should be able to use that or know about that tool. It's very powerful. Let's you compare schools, all kinds of different things. Look at, choose schools in case you wanted to see all the schools in your district and that, that kind of thing. So just want to make sure we have some, some clarity on that, that both, they want, it isn't exclusive, those two items are not exclusive to, to the meeting. It's really about making sure you have, even going deeper than probably required, but we feel it would be helpful. So just wanted to know that.
Mr. Snow?
This is John.
Yeah.
All righty. So we have the board here. So let's start with our legislative discussion.
And the matrix is on the board agenda, so you have access to it, to the board agenda.
And if I'm correct...
And John, we know that you have to wrap up by 1:30, too, so.
Yeah, we have committee hearings starting then.
Okay.
Do you want me to, Mr. Snow, do you want me to go ahead and start?
Yes, let's, let's go ahead and start. And board members will be able to give you their feedback, but we won't be giving you voting or, or anything on that. Obviously, that happens at a board meeting, so.
Right.
All right.
Well, and I think maybe for efficiency purposes as well, I'll go through these, but I would ask any board member that has any question about any of them, please just interrupt and stop and we'll, we'll deal with questions on given bills as we go along. And we start, the legislative committee has already been through all the bills up to the last green mark on page seven. So we'll be starting with LB488. Several of these bills, by the way, departments are looking into to see how they would impact OPS before any position was taken. And this would be one of them. This would require, LB48 would require the age-appropriate mental health education as well as drug awareness and prevention education be included in the school program. LB495 to school would require some additional school disciplinary data to be reported to MDE. LB497, School District Property Tax Authority Act would limit the growth or the ability of the school district to, to two and a half percent, the percentage increase in CPI or the percentage increase in enrollment. The problem is that it applies at $2, so the natural growth that would typically take place in, in valuations, which is generally how a school district keeps up with inflation.
Go ahead. One second, John, sorry. Nancy, go ahead.
Because I looked at 497, I can't remember if we don't, or we didn't know what we were doing there, but I think that's a very worrisome one, if I understood correctly. So are we noting anything as we're going through these? Or are you going to actually get it before we went through them? And then I have a couple comments, but here we are on this one, it is worrisome and I don't know if we're going to be discussing these or just go through it again.
I can do it whichever way, whichever way you like. I can tell you that typically where we go with the legislative committee is that we recommend positions based on the policies that the board has adopted, which are at the end of your, your document, or based on past history, what, what the district has done with legislation in the past.
So real quick, John, real quick. So if we can, just, can you hear me, John?
Yeah.
If we can, just go through and then board members give feedback. What we would eventually have to do is the legislative committee will eventually have to convene. Obviously, we want to make sure that the legislative committee takes positions on items outside of this meeting, when we have our committee meeting, that are crucial to anything that is coming up this week for a hearing, that we do need to take a position on. But like you said, in general, on Monday, the legislative committee on the positions we've already taken that need board approval will make those recommendations to the board and then have people vote on those recommendations that the legislative committee has recommended.
Right. And we...
It's, it's in green.
Mr. Snow, we, the only bill, we've checked it, the only bill up for hearing next week that would have an impact on OPS is LB575. We don't have a position on it yet, but Matt Ray asked Terry Norris to take a look at it. She said everything that we're doing in the bill, or everything that is required in the bill, we're already doing. It's covered by federal law and requires us to do it anyway. Really, the only thing that would change is that would require the board to, to adopt a policy that says this is what we're doing. So it's nothing we would likely get involved in anyway. So I don't think there will be, I don't think anything's going to be coming up before our next legislative committee meeting.
Thank you. Nancy?
Is that all different from what we have typically always done about the students there?
What bill are you talking about?
575. Oh, I think OPS has already, always done that. Maybe this is for other districts.
Yes, he mentioned that we are already doing it and we require doing it by, already, so it doesn't affect us. It's those school districts that aren't. So you are correct. So back up to LB, which one are you on, John, I believe?
We're on 97.
Okay, 497, which is page seven.
And again, any questions, and I would tell you, there's a lot of these coming up. They're going to be very problematic, but we don't have hearings coming next week, so the legislative committee will be able to discuss these in more detail next week. But we want to go through them so the entire board has an understanding of all the stuff that's out there that, and has the ability to ask any questions about any of them as we go through. So that, that would limit, 497 would limit the ability to make a, a property tax request of how, how much we could request, but it would, but it wouldn't change TOSA to, to make up any difference, any loss in that request. 506, again, limits the, limits what our, our property tax requests could be, and that's in dollars, not in percentages. The, I mean, it gives you a percentage of how much additional increase, but it's an increase in the dollars, not in the, in the rate. And it's one we're going to have to look at to see what the actual impact will be on OPS, but it could be bothersome as well. 507, repeal sales tax exemptions, as does 508. It's kind of two versions of the same sort of bill. It's intended to address property taxes primarily rural areas. There, we'll see a lot of bills like this that will remove sales tax exemptions and use the dollars that are generated then from removal of those exemptions to go to the property tax credit cash fund to be used for property tax relief. And some that are concerned, not just OPS, but all school districts are, things that I have in there, like right now, prepared food, certain, we basically have to charge sales tax on our meals. Student-teacher organizations would have to start paying taxes, admissions to events for, for schools. All those types of things would be subject to sales tax.
Sean, did I hear that they pulled those things out when we were down there on Sunday, Monday? I feel like that was a piece of the conversation. Is that not on 508 and 507?
They're, they're still in the bill.
Okay, but they're maybe having conversations.
It's probably, the sponsor may have, I don't see them passing.
Right.
Because the impact is just, I don't think they thought through the impact. But it did get taken out, a similar was introduced last year, or two similar bills were introduced last year, and it, it did get taken out of there before any further debate took place. But like I said, I don't anticipate that that's going to move forward because I think there'd be a significant amount of outcry. LB515 makes changes to, to the Student Discipline Act, primarily procedural. But when a student is suspended or expelled, requires the school district to give them credit for if they've attended another school, another school district or private school or other training, as long as it's from an administrative division, would require the school district to give credit for that grade, appropriate grade level of education. LB530 would reduce the agricultural land value from seventy-five percent to sixty-five percent. Would have a significant impact on TOSA, drive up the cost significantly. LB565 is, would provide that if you, in other plans as well, companion build or other plans. But if a, if a member of the plan has not made a designation of beneficiary and is married, then it's presumed that the, the spouse, the members, spouse would be determined to be the beneficiary. LB568 would take some lottery dollars, excuse me, and redirect them from the Education Innovation Fund into mental health, mental health first aid, and that's defined in the bill, goes through a series of things that would have to be done, including requiring, it puts the duty on the MDE and state board and they would have to adopt action plans or protocols that a school district could follow. 575, we talked about, 581 is, I don't think this affects us. It would require that under the Budget Act, it's political subdivisions, use generally accepted accounting principles and use the accrual method or the accrual basis. I believe, should confirm that with Courtney, but I believe we're on, or Luanne, I'm sure you'd be aware, but the, I think we're already on the accrual basis.
We, we convert to the accrual basis at the end of the year. We're talking about whether or not that should happen throughout the year. So yeah, it wouldn't have an impact on us.
Okay. 588 changes the local effort rate. Local effort rate is a factor inside TOSA that, that basically calculates how much, how much you will be determined or how much you will be presumed to be receiving in property tax receipts. And it's, it would be set at the minimum levy less two point, or excuse me, less three cents instead of 2.97 cents, which is current. So it's a dollar, right now, it's a dollar 2.03. This would just change it to a dollar two. So it would be a, a reduction in how much property tax would be presumed. 619 would require that insurance companies cover behavioral health if it's taking place in a school setting, meaning that if you have a credentialed example, credentialed psychologist working with a student, that it would be, it would require it to be reimbursed by insurance. A lot, a lot of companies, I think EHA has just converted and are doing this already, but a lot of insurance companies don't reimburse a facility if the service takes place in a school setting. 634 would require this...
John, one second.
I'd like to talk about that in a minute. That's a really tricky bill. It can be extremely expensive. Normally, when students have that kind of an issue, there has been a way to perhaps have them be outside of the district with their treatment. We don't encourage, and we haven't ever encouraged, the treatment inside of the district because of the extremely high cost. And this can be done in other ways. People can afford it. They, they can also get that outside of the district. And those that can, we hope they have the insurance and stuff. I mean, I'm a person who knows all about that, so pretty much I would carry them. So that's why I'm bringing it up.
So that, one of the things I can share is that it's really around, I will say Project Harmony was one of the main folks around this, because these are all mental health services that are being delivered. And I think Blue Cross has already made the transition. But the big thing is that you had kids who, if we, if they don't get treated at school, if the provider... treated at school, if the provider can't come to school, they won't get what they need. And so that's, so that's kind of where, where it came from. And what I think is also to help providers who have multiple children in one school, they can go and see several children. And some of this, Scrackey, is really around as well, kids being able to stay in school because they really, they are having so many issues that if they don't get these mental health services, they really have a hard time maintaining their mental health. So I just wanted to throw that, throw that in there. I think it's really just to help with the, quite frankly, the bill and nothing else.
Okay, John.
Okay. LB six thirty-four, we've seen this in devolved over the last maybe three years, would require school buses to have seat belts. The National Highway Transportation Safety Council or Agency always opposed this, but a couple of years ago, after new research, they switched their position and said school buses should have seat belts. It's applicable to, to buses that are purchased or contracted for service prior to the effective date of the act, so it would not require retrofitting, which would be a big cost for the district. And it also addresses a concern we've had in the past, that it, it would apply because we contract for a service. It takes that into account as well.
John, can you, can you share a little bit why the commission was against having it to begin with and why it's changed?
They, the, I don't have this in depth, but the prior thought that it did not protect, that those seat belts did not protect children in the instance of a crash. The research indicated that that was the case, that it did not protect children. But as research has continued, the federal agency was convinced that seat belts protect children. And so they are, they are recommending now that, that school buses have a, have seat belts.
So I think that study got finished in May. We just, we spent a bunch of time on Sunday talking about it. And so it is very, very recent data. Hilkman has really had this bill evolve, even to the point of funding. I think if you couldn't afford it, then you didn't have to do it as well. So he's got quite a few things in that bill that probably we should look more in depth at as a legislative committee, because I think there's, there's definitely conversation that needs to be had around this specific bill.
And with that, I, I just have like some questions, and I haven't looked at the bill yet, but just in my history of working with, just contracting out buses, depending on the size of kid on that bus, some will put three to a seat, and if they're larger, they recommend two. So will those buses have three seat belts to the seat for those kids or will they only have two, which will require some organizations or school districts, because they're there to use more buses to transfer students?
Right, you could only put the number of students on the bus where there were the number of seat belts. So, but there's definitely conversation to be had, especially as we're looking at a new bus.
And then one more question I have, and I don't know if you guys have the answer to this, but our, our early childhood buses, they already have seat belts because those are OPS buses, right? No others, five point or three point?
I don't know, but I'll find out.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
I'll find out.
Thank you. You can continue. Thank you.
LB six forty-four is the Work Forty Diploma Act, which allows departments intended to, or the stated purpose is to get, get the kids more ready for career with both soft skills and, and additional training. But when we talked about this, Dr. Logan, I don't know if you, I don't know if you want to bring up your concerns with that?
It's a charter school bill. Veil does work.
The concern is that it's, it allows private schools to get state dollars to do this, to do this training.
Well, it's actually not just that. It's private and public providers, so, and that's why they veil it, because public, because of public charter schools. Because charter schools are public charter schools. But, for example, a KIP as a CMO, as a charter management organization, would be a person who would apply, or a mastery, or a blue dot, which is very common on the West Coast. So that's, that's who are the kinds of people who apply to provide this kind of work. In addition to many for-profit, actually almost all for-profit in the workforce development piece, what they're doing, kids get a GED as a part of it. That's how they say it's an educational piece, and along with it, so maybe something like a test, that's the name of the organization, and several others that do this, do that kind of work for profit. So just want to make sure we're aware of that.
Who's introducing that bill?
Senator McDonald.
Okay.
Is that LB four, six forty-four?
Yes.
All righty. Next, sorry.
No, thanks for sharing that.
Okay. Six forty-seven?
Six forty-seven is virtual, the Virtual Schools Bill. We need to go back through it, make sure that it has all, that it mirrors what the department's doing, because right now we are getting, we are getting TOSA aid for our virtual schools. There were some concerns that raised that, about how counting virtual school students. My understanding right now, we count them at various points during the year pursuant to MDE rules, and that kind of trued up with the, when we get the, I think, the ADM calculated at the end of the year.
Who's who's?
But we need to make sure that we're getting all our students and student hours counted. So there's still work to be done on that.
John, if I'm correct, this is Senator Wayne's bill?
Yes.
And this is, is this the bill that was initially developed, charged by the district?
Yes.
When we were trying to get the Virtual School Bill, and then the state adopted and changed the standards, so then we didn't need it, and now it's?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. So what's the difference in the, what the state's doing in the bill, just?
The way they're keeping track of ours.
Is that, okay.
Is that what it is?
Yes, that's the, that's the difference. LB six fifty, Teach for Nebraska Summer Program, would have kids who have just completed their eighth grade year or third grade year to have a six-week program during the summer on the campus of UNK or UNO. And it would allow, it would also have dollars allocated for graduates of those programs to, college scholarships available to, if they are pursuing teaching certificates, if they're in an education program in college. That is to create, to educate more teachers.
Do you know where the funding will come from for this?
Right now it's general fund.
Okay.
That's what, that's what's specified in the bill. And you can also accept private dollars. I don't know if, if there've been agreements to get some private dollars, but set up to, to allow that.
I have a question, two questions around this, John, and maybe these could be. The first one is, is there a, I don't know if this is a part of it, but is there a commitment as a part of this? So you get the scholarship, but you're committing to teaching in Nebraska? That's the first part. And the second part would be, are you, would it be in a high-needs areas? Because what you could be doing is paying for teachers to go to school districts where they don't even have a problem recruiting. So I wonder about our ability to, because this is, I mean, I think many people would agree this is needed, but it's only if the outcome would be targeted to the kids who, to be in schools where the kids need, we need teachers in the month.
Aren't we already doing this, right? And then they, if they teach for two years in our district, they have that ability to do that? Is that correct, John?
Did you hear?
I'm having some trouble hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The questions.
I thought we were already doing this, and those people who were taking those classes had to be committed to teaching for the district for two years if they're going anywhere else.
I'm not familiar with that program, and I'll certainly check into it.
We have, we do have, I know we have at least one program where there is a commitment, but let me get the specifics for Mrs. Scrackey.
This, are we, which one are we on? Six fifty?
Six fifty.
Yes.
That's more related to students, though, right?
Yes. This is targeted to students. It's to get them interested in middle school.
It's not for teachers.
In teaching. The bill references some research that, it's also, by the way, targeted to underserved kids. And it references research that, that if kids get interested in teaching at a younger age, in a middle school age, that they're more likely to, to follow the course that prepares them for teaching, and more likely to stay in the profession when they get in there. So that, those are the issues that he's trumped, that Senator Wayne's, that Senator Wayne is trying to address, is, is getting more underserved kids into teaching positions and preparing them in such a way that they are less likely to lead the career after a short period of time.
So John, I know you had a drop-dead time of one-thirty. Is there anything you want to hit the board with before you have to go?
Taking a quick look.
John, I have a quick, I have a quick question for you on that OSER shell bill.
Yes.
What is, and it's the one six eighty-three, what is, can you define force de-risking
This basically, in a nutshell, is try getting people to take a discounted lump sum.
Ah, I got it.
And into, which gets you, gets you out of, gets them out of the program to, in the long run. Basically, it saves money for the long term. It's not something you can do with a large number of people. It's a concept that Gary Clatterbuck described has been used in some other, in some other districts. It's not a cure-all, but it might be one that you can shave some dollars off the arc over time.
Yep, and it's definitely a corporate tool.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
For sure.
One that should, that, a couple of them that should be discussed, LB six sixty-eight should be discussed by the board. That's, would create an alternative certification process for teachers. Basically, it would allow temporary, a temporary license. It's got some things that allow out-of-state teachers to come in, make it easier for them to, experienced teachers can come in and get approved to teach in Nebraska quicker. It also has a temporary teaching certificate for a couple of years that would require only a baccalaureate degree and a, being able to pass a test that would be developed by MDE. I know Dr. Logan had some concerns with it, but it should be discussed by the board. LB six seventy, which is the next bill down, that's the same bill that we saw, actually got a couple of, couple of changes to it, but it's basically the same bill we've seen in the, in the past that would move dollars through tax credits, move state dollars to private schools. There's several, as you go down through it, there's several other TOSA bills or bills that would affect TOSA, and we're going to be reviewing those to see what the, the financial impact on OPS would be. There's the two, OSER shell bills, which are shell bills to, if we could find consensus on some, some options, then we would then have a vehicle to use to get those passed. And school meals, there, if you look at it, seven twenty-eight, there's a concern, there's an earlier bill that, that we had as well, that's already on the matrix from prior. But this, this one, again, they're trying to address concerns about, about kids who can't or haven't paid their school meal bills, and trying to prevent any stigmatization surrounding any collection or refusal to serve a child because of a past bill. So again, that should probably have some board discussion. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on, on anything before we get to hearings.
Anything from anybody? All right. Well, thank you, John.
Thank you. We'll see ya.
If you guys have any other questions or anything as we move through, please let myself know, or anybody that is on the committee, or Dr. Logan.
Do you want to talk about the one that you said I had, whatever it was, the teaching certificate?
Yes.
So I feel like there's an opportunity to do some alternative teaching certificates. The issue that we have is that right now in the state of Nebraska, if they adopted this, the standard for a classroom teacher would be lower than the standard for substitute teacher. So we need to fix the substitute teacher item, you know, as well. And that would not, that wouldn't, that wouldn't ever make sense. So I think that we've got a couple things to think about. And then to tighten up the language, I think that the, the district is feeling like it's, it might be, the board might want to consider supporting parts of it. For example, it's difficult to get a teaching certificate in Nebraska if you, sometimes, depending on what state you come from. So I, I use Texas because Texas has this kind of liberal around there. So we have teachers who come from Texas, and they never can get a, they may have taught five years, six years, ten years, and they, and I mean, that could be disparity between the requirements, but it happens in other states, too, that have a lot more stringent requirements. And so the board might want to say that they want to look at the, at least part of it for having reciprocity with other states, if not the whole piece. I mean, I have hired, worked with a lot of teachers who are in alternative programs, and, and just a full disclosure, my daughter went through an alternative certificate program, so I've seen them, not necessarily, but I've seen them work well in some instances.
Thank you. All righty. Well, anybody want to discuss anything else, any of these bills? Obviously, you get the link from Lindsay that comes out with the new bills, with the bills. If you click on that actual link there, it goes directly to the bill. You can read all those bills. And also, don't hesitate to reach out to me if you have any other questions. So I think Matt went to go get Linda and our next item, leave. It's D three, SRP Threat Assessment. And would you, for everybody who works, I don't think everybody has officially met you on the board, so.
Donald Morrison, Director of School Safety.
Can you tell us where you came from before?
Yeah, absolutely. For the past five years, I started in this department in November. For the past five school years, I've been at Davis Middle School as an assistant principal. Prior to that, I was a student personnel assistant for Omaha Public Schools. For those who know, that position kind of, kind of changed, morphed into the school support liaisons. Prior to that, I was a dean of students at Burke High School. And five years prior to that, I taught PE and human growth and development at Beverly Lake.
Thank you. All right, before yours.
Okay.
All right, well, I'm going to start off, I'm just going to pass out a couple of things, a couple of presents for you guys. So, so to say, so refer, you refer back to these. A lot of the things I'll be going over, you already have electronic documents of, that you can refer to as well.
So these are all uploaded to the agenda as well?
And before you go, start on this, could you explain the organization? This is a national organization.
Yes, yep, that's kind of part of the, I'll come back to it unless you want to.
Stop interrupting.
Yeah, no, not a problem, not a problem. Come back to that. Well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to come before today and talk a little bit about the Department of School Safety. Just speaking here on, on behalf of the district and, and as our department and for me personally, just when Dr. Logan started, how I refer to it is, is how refreshing it really was to listen and hear her state that one of her big rocks was school safety. Obviously, in the, in the time that we're in, in the time that we're in, I don't know if you have, is that good? In the time that we're in, unfortunately, it seems like every month we're going, seeing in the media some emergency crisis, school shooting related. So really, what I think that truly did when Dr. Logan came in, and safety has always been, always been important, and it's part of everyone's job every day, but what it really truly did was allowed us to take a look at how we're doing things in the district, what we're doing in regards to safety, because just how important this truly is, and as you know, and as, as parents in our community, you know, and the last thing you think of when you, when you send your, your child to school every day is, is not being able to see them at the end of the day, so, thank you. And with that being said also, that, that is a big piece of our, of our department. We want our administrators administrating, we want our teachers, teachers, teaching, students learning throughout the school day, and, and we want peace of mind for our parents. So this department really gives an opportunity for us to focus on that, to keep school safety a priority and to, to help alleviate some of that off of our, our building leadership as well and to keep the focus there. I will also let you know, Ms. Lisa Utterback was sad and she wanted to make sure that I let you know, she was sad that she was not able to be here today. She is out of town in some professional development. So she oversees school community services in our district. I started in November, so she really took a big initiative in collaboration with Dr. Logan's vision for some of the things that we're, that were going to be a focal point from the Department of School Safety for the eighteen nineteen school year. With those, with that being said, two major points or two big pieces of school safety that she has set up and we are running with fall under standard response protocol and threat assessments. So that's just a small piece of what we do in our department, but those are the two pieces that I'm going to discuss with you today and kind of go over. So we're going to start with the, with the standard response protocol, and this first slide here for you, just a little bit of a, kind of a candid look at where we're at within our world of school these days, but for those of you who can't, may not be able to read that, this is a young elementary girl, appears to be coming home. Mom states, "How was your first day of school?" Daughter responds, "Okay, I guess." First, we had a lockdown drill, then we had an active shooter drill. Following that, we had a fire drill. After that, we got to meet our security guards, then we watched a video on avoiding sexual predators. So, again, kind of the realistic piece where we're at, but again, keeping school safety a piece, this is a big part of what we do every day. Standard response protocol, this is initiative, and then again, you guys have some of these handouts in front of you, but this is an initiative that has started and called the purpose of this, this is a, a response-focused protocol in the time of a crisis. Okay? So again, as events occur, standard response protocol is really a guide for our district in a, in a direction that we were moving to assist with this process. Again, kind of a reaction-based response in the time of crisis. Let's move on to the next slide here, because we'll come back to, I think, one of the questions that you had. Where this originated from, it started, the standard response protocol came from Colorado and it came from a foundation titled, "I love you guys." This foundation was started by a set of parents that lost their daughter in a school shooting, and the title, of course, comes from their daughter. Last message to their parents through text messaging was, "I love you guys." So, very sad, tragic situation, but it also tells you a little bit about the sincerity and the focus that these parents had and where this went from there. So they initiated the standard response protocol. I'm going to kind of bounce around here a little bit, but with, with that being said, when our district took on the standard response protocol, communication of this was a big piece, and how are we going to go about learning this? The Nebraska Department of Education School, School Safety Department has initiated this piece a couple of years ago. A lot of our state uses standard response protocol, a big piece of the metro area is using standard response protocol as well. So at that time, when OPS really started looking at transforming to standard response protocol is, was again, under Lisa Utterback and several principals in the district, obviously their names are up there, but just a little bit of information there for you for, for when it originated. Clearly, our district has a big emphasis on communication and being transparent with our families, with our students, with our teachers. Standard response protocol does that, and when we initiated it, this obviously, we wanted to make sure that the parents, that our parents in our community knew that there was a need for this. A lot of previous, as I stated earlier, I was an assistant principal at a middle school, and, you know, before standard response protocol, there was a lot of individualized, almost island-type mentality or approach to some school crisis at times. And we have programs that have been in place that have assisted with that, but standard response protocol really ties all that together, and I'll, I'll hit more on that. But with standard response protocol, really in the daily process and the weekly process and what we're trying to do, they really focus on four main areas. Those areas up here, lockout, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. Lockdown, also up there is, you can see that there is the announcements that are made when these incidents, when these crises arise. Lockout is for a situation where there is a threat outside of the building. I'm going to hit on lockout and lockdown a little bit more in the next slides. Lockdown is when a threat is inside the building, helping keep as many lives safe as possible in an active shooter situation. Evacuation, obviously, in situations where there may be a gas, a gas leak or something along those lines, where we have to evacuate the building, fire drills, et cetera. Evacuation is a big piece of standard response protocol, and then the fourth piece that they hit on is shelter. Think of shelter in regards to tornado drills or tornadoes, et cetera. A big piece of the standard response protocol is really the simplicity of it. You know, we got to think, I mean, we have elementary, we have young people in our buildings, we, this, this has to be something that's pretty easy to learn, pretty simple. So with that being said, standard response protocol uses common language for, for our students, so that when we're talking about students from grades all throughout their career, this is something that's going to be the same from school to school, grade to grade, et cetera. There's consistency for staff, they don't have to move to different drills, they don't have to learn different process, terminology doesn't have to change. Parent practices, again, like I stated, for students, it's very easily understood, okay? And there's communication that has occurred to the parents already, so this communication has occurred, but it's able to be reinforced, the protocol, because parents know what is going on. As we communicate to parents through district communications in the time of crisis, and we are using the same terminology for standard response protocol, they know what we're referring to. And then a big piece, and one of the biggest pieces of this is the common language for our first responders. Just think of that, and I always refer that to the sense of fire, or a police officer responding to high school A, who has their own terminology for an active shooter. Week later, that same police officer is reporting to school B. You can imagine that confusion if that's not the same terminology. So that is something that standard response protocol brings together, and I can tell you from working with the police departments since I started in November, they are calling buildings in the time of needs, they are using the same terminology, we're asking that you go into lockout for thirty minutes, et cetera. So, so that, that common knowledge, that common terminology is already being raised. Again, just to hit on those, because it is kind of similar, the difference between lockdown and lockout, there's another slide here for you to, to refer back to, as you guys have a copy of this, but, but again, lockout is the threat is outside, lockdown is the threat is inside. There are also signs that get posted.
Real quick, so lockout.
Yes.
If I'm, if I hear of a lockout, is that something the district calls or is that something the police call?
Some of both, some of, some of both, more often than district, probably the individual.
So more, more of a.
Yep, yep, it's not a, I, in a building principal, I have to contact somebody down at TAC to go into it. This is a quick response of, we know there's a threat outside, we're going to err on the side of safety, we're going into a lockout. Yep, but there is also the scenario where the police can call that, they'll call the building principal, let them know, let him or her know, we're responding, we're issuing a warrant in the area where there's worries of a threat, we want you to go into a, a lockout.
And I would just add, sometimes it's parents in the area are calling the school because they know their kids are there and something has just happened, so they're, we've gone into lockout because of those situations in the past. It's just, you know, it's kind of a variety of things.
When you look up here, this, this question comes about fairly often, as, as I said, the common knowledge and the common announcement is the same. So if any of us in this room are visiting any building, you hear the announcements for either of these, we know what's being discussed, we know what the protocol is for that. Get the question often, with lockout, really what a lockout is, is practice as, business as usual inside the building. Students are still in classrooms, teachers are still teaching. So the question comes, if we're in a lockout, why do we announce it? Why do we try to alarm any kids? Why do we alarm anybody? And that answer is, well, we want to make sure people know that we're not letting anybody in. We wanted people also know, hey, we're not, we're not leaving the building at this time as well, having to go to a car or a student picked up, et cetera. So again, any questions about lockout and lockdown, because that's, yes?
Probably, are we putting this in the newsletter to different schools?
Yep.
Put it in their newsletter, I'll try and provide the package.
Yep, yes, exactly, and on, I think it might even be on that handout for where it went home to, to parents as a district as well at the beginning of the school year, but we are also asking, and the principals are often putting in newsletters throughout the school year, just little reminders or little safety bits, checking into buildings, just little pieces like that.
So did it, I mean, it must have gone home with elementary, but what happens with middle and high school?
How did it go home?
Yeah, I don't remember.
I'm not sure, the information, let me take a look, let me refer here, because, I'm sorry, that was early in the school year.
Notification should have gone sometime.
It went in the district-wide newsletter and principals were also providing.
So Siobhan, did you get it?
This is true, yeah.
Newsletter.
Yeah.
So my daughter, we have like an electronic newsletter and then we also have paper, so I've got mine.
I don't know if there was.
All principals got it.
Yeah.
And at middle and high, it's.
I mean, I don't know, people, many, many, many schools send me their newsletters, I know that I noticed it in many school newsletters, they copy me on their newsletters. So I would, you know, and we told our principals to include it in their newsletters. So if you didn't get it, you can let us know or parents can let us know to make sure that they get it, but also, I know it went out.
Be a district-wide.
It's gone out many, many times, be a district-wide.
Individual.
If they didn't get it in their schools as well. I would say that the biggest, I mean, I don't, I'm sorry, I had to step out for a second, and you may have, did you, you may have covered that, I mean, the lockout versus lockdown is really about, just, there's not any threat inside the building, but there could be somebody outside, a naked person walking their dog, was the example that we had at a school. Say it again.
That's always happened.
No, it did happen, it happened this year, a naked person walking their dog, so.
And again, a lot of times they're, they're proactive or preventative, a warrant being issued in the, in the neighborhood that the police are worried might turn violent, that has happened, it's happened as well, so. Known, real threat was known, but again, preventative.
So pertaining to the, I know we're not in the board room, which probably would have helped us with this a little bit, so let's say we're having a board meeting and they say there's a lockout, we're in that board meeting room with community members, what do we do?
What would you do?
I mean.
For a lockout?
A lockout, I mean, it's TAC building, board meetings go.
This is you. Keep going.
The doors are locked?
Yeah.
So all the doors in the TAC building will be locked, because there's so many different backways to get in?
That's, that's our practice, that's our practice.
I would lock all the doors.
So you would be the person tasked to lock all the doors for the board meeting room? And then?
You're just talking to the individual board room itself.
That is always going to keep us.
No, I'm talking about in the board meeting room, there's a, there's a lockout, the lockout is issued for some reason, that gets alerted, how do we inform the community that is there, because they're there for a regular board meeting, and who is designated to lock that room? Because obviously, you're not going to be at every board meeting.
Right, exactly. The, the, there is SROs that are on duty that would, that would work with that and from the buildings well that are familiar with this, but as far as locking the, the TAC building doors, that currently is a process right now where somebody wouldn't be able to get into the building, and then we have the, the security at the front, front office. When we have practiced, we actually practiced this as a TAC building, so we would lock the front doors from being able to just walk in and open the door. That, that ability. Now, is the possibility of a staff member being the threat walking in, unfortunately, that is a, a possibility, who has badge access to exterior doors.
Threat inside.
Threat inside is locked down.
During a board meeting, what's, what's our plan? Do we have a plan for board members?
Yep.
Because I know the city council, they, I was informed, their thing is like bulletproofed almost, or shielded, where they are instructed to get under. Ours, depending on where you're at, there's no, there's not.
Backpack.
So there's.
It's a place, right?
Yeah.
The doors are, the doors are glass, which obviously can be broken, but those doors are able to be, to be locked, and then you would flood out to the back doors, and we kind of walked through this earlier this year as a process that we're going to walk through with you guys before a board meeting, during a board meeting, I don't know how that's going to happen, but of practicing the lockdown scenario, because there's a lot of doors within the, that you can flood out and, and really in that situation end up, you know, if, if they need, you know, the sake of run, the run I'd fight, there's that scenario too, being able to escape. Being able to verbalize what door specifically, I'm sorry, I'm not as familiar with the boardroom, but, but we've walked through it and I guess I could.
Sure, I mean, and the reason why I bring this up is, I would say it was like four years ago, whenever we got on the board, there was somebody, it was a long time ago, they, they actually gave a pretty good compliment to the board, but just the way they started off, people got nervous because they were like, after I give my comment, this district, the board will be different or something like that, and board members are looking at each other.
Of course.
We were commenting, it's like, what's the protocol if something happened right there?
Right. Well, and in, in the case within the room, I mean, it's, in that case, it's gonna be a situation of run. You know, run hide fight in that scenario for the, for the, if it happens right in the middle of everyone.
And. We hope that the police officers get our.
The SRO is, is there, yep, absolutely.
And if we think there's an, if we think there's an additional threat, I know I always brought in two police officers. We had a threat in one meeting, so I made sure we had two officers at the next meeting, just covering both sides, so that if something happened. And it was a pretty decent threat.
Entering and exit buildings, obviously, that's, you know, this is part of the process. One thing that was mandated throughout the district was that all OPS employees wear badges throughout the school year. The teacher who teaches in the same building every single day is expected, mandated to wear their badge. Overseeing school crisis doesn't mean I just get to walk into any building and say I oversee, et cetera. All badges are expected to be worn. With that being said, I also have for you. Um, just some small cheat sheets of standard response protocol. I put mine in the back of my badge. In the case of a crisis occurring, sometimes you're not always thinking the quickest or the most clear, that's what the purpose of this. Some schools have already got this going, something that we are, um, if you would take one, pass it around, please. But something that we are encouraging as well, being held in wallets, badges, et cetera. But again, we just wanna make sure that we reiterate, as you are visiting buildings, please make sure that you have your, your badge. Just to prevent that process and the check-in process at the buildings to prevent, um, that worry of who is entering buildings at what time. Uh, signing in and out, again, made a big piece of what a lot is going home in some of those new newsletters that I'm seeing is refocusing and hitting on the process. Sending out to their community, their parents of reminders of, please, make sure you're coming in the front doors, make sure you're signing in, signing out. So that we know for the sa- safety of our students, staff and all visitors, that we know who is here. The door of opening and closing, uh, obviously a big piece that we wanna, that security officers, SROs, all staff are mindful of. Once the school day starts, we want the front doors being the only access for visitors. Um, again, this is a little bit of, of communication that may be important for you as far as visiting buildings. That sign there on the left and, and just, if you wanna see it here, just kind of, so it gives you an idea of the size of these. Drill in process, please just be mindful of these. As you're entering a building, if you see this, it'll be just several minutes, because buildings are practicing a drill in, uh, just a few minutes. And then they'll be back to letting you in after that point. The other piece is lockouts. This is always evolving, how do we communicate lockout? You're on your way to a building, how do you know if a building is lockout, is in a lockout? Maybe the threat is in the parking lot, you know? Always evolving that communication and, and looking at how we wanna expand on that. And, um, in communication with, with district communications and, and how can we encourage that? And how can we get that out to the public? Or anybody coming back to the TAC building, is this is obviously a, a lot of employees who go to buildings and come back.
So at this building, I know, uh, in the past, I've tested it with some board members. And if you go in from that front door and you run, or there's a bunch of people, and that security is sitting behind the desk. He, by the time that individual gets around the desk to stop you, this building's so big, you can disappear.
Sure. Certainly, we do have.
What's the.
During our.
Protocol, if somebody just came in and just ran right into the tackle. Our superintendent sits in a, a fishbowl.
Sure, absolutely. Well, we do have two security officers that are, that are on, during, during school hour, or till six o'clock.
Yeah.
From six AM to six PM, we do have two security officers. So there, you're right, there is one, as you enter to the right, behind that big desk, and that's, that can be difficult to get around. But we also have one stationed on the left. And expectations are to, to visit and greet everyone who comes in.
So, next question, I know this.
Sure.
I don't know if you guys have seen it, is that second security guard supposed to be on the phone all the time?
Are they supposed to be on their phone, certainly not.
That's security guys.
Certainly.
Not always, but sometimes they come in, he'll say hello, but he won't even look up.
Can I, can I ask if that's been recently too? Because it has been addressed several times, I can say since November.
It's not a personnel, I'm just saying like, should they be standing or should they be sitting? Should they, what, like, if I walk in, I see a security guard there, what should they typically be?
Should be doing, what should be their presence?
Yeah.
We, we ask that, and it's, we ask that there's one person always greeting, making sure they're seen. As far as standing the entire time, I don't, I don't know that that's ever been explained to them as, as we expect one of you standing the entire time. We encourage it, and I know from going in and out, there's a lot of times where they are standing. Um, I'm sure there's times when there's, when they're both sitting too. So I can certainly have that conversation, because that, that's, I mean, that's an important piece. But really our biggest piece, you know, since I've been starting, since I've started in November, is really just that communication with everyone. Eye contact, sometimes it's just a gesture, but making sure you are acknowledging everyone who's entering the building, that's the expectation. Um, standard response protocol, again, we have the form in front of you. That, just for, again, for your knowledge, for your information, if you needed to see that. Um, that talks about early in the school year, how standard response protocol was taught, instructed and how this district was educated in regards to the standard response protocol. Because again, this was new this school year for Omaha Public Schools. So it has some communication base there for your needs. That's kind of the end of the first piece on standard response. I know we've been asking questions as we go, is there any other further questions on standard response? Threat assessments.
Oh, perfect, that's what I was gonna ask.
Next.
I guess I would just say, this was really incredible, um, presentation. I, I do think it should be done at a board meeting, just because, um, probably elementary parents got it, but if you're a high school parent, you don't read the stuff you get a lot of times. And so, I, you know, I think it was first time through for me and really good information. I would love to see, I, I just really think this is a board meeting presentation. So, I don't know that, I would hate to stop you, but I don't know that maybe we wanna, I'd like to see thread.
Yeah.
At a board meeting.
You guys.
I agree.
Yeah. I think it's something to have this and.
All of these documents are really, I would say.
Possibly at the, one of our meetings, if we could come in early before the actual meeting, around thirty minutes and actually do drills.
Yep.
Um, because personally, I'm not saying, my dad, he did security type of stuff with the military, but that glass door there, even though the security's there.
Sure.
That glass door's not bulletproof.
And our visitors to the boardroom, that don't come every time, are gonna be looking to the, to you guys for what to do.
And how, let's say there's a board member there, um, something's happening, what is the protocol at the board table? Uh, if, let's say someone was removed out of the district and that parent shows up to the board meeting and sits directly in front of you and stares you down. Obviously, it's not a actual physical threat, but how do we communicate that, uh, to each other, just to make sure we're all safe and that everyone in the room is safe? I'm not so worried about myself, I'm not saying I'm, but I'm just saying, I'm more worried about that individual that just shows up for a regular board meeting, to make sure that we know what to do.
Yep. And that's, that's why drills are in place, that's why at schools, we practice this and should be practicing at board meetings as well, I agree with you completely.
So, so I would love that, if we could do this presentation at a board meeting and come in thirty minutes early and go through some of those things that we should be aware of. Because I think, right, this is more covering really great stuff, I mean, great stuff, but then to add on to that for us would be awesome.
Good morning. Yep.
Otherwise, we're lunch early, like.
No problem.
We're good listeners.
How long is it gonna take for, can we take, everybody wanna take like a five minute break?
Yes.
Uh, and then we'll come back and then, will Scott be ready?
Scott's ready.
Scott's, and then help Scott, then Scott will get ready and then we'll do some board governance after that. And then on to OSers in CAS, so we'll be jumping around.
I'm gonna get started. Um, so we have three goals for this presentation today, so you can hold me to them. Uh, the first is, as we, from research, look for in every presentation, we wanna increase data use and awareness. Our goal today is to do so through two primary mechanisms. One is increasing curiosity, uh, which as I've told other groups, i- is always a primary goal for us, because curiosity helps us get around some known human biases when it comes to interpreting and understanding data. Uh, specifically and for example, those include the confirmation bias, where we come to data and expect it's gonna show us something, and low and behold, it does. It shows us exactly what we thought we'd find. A little dose of curiosity and digging deeper based on that will help you to uncover whether or not you truly have discovered what you thought you would find. Addition, additionally, uh, we also have a bias where we really hope that, um, it's called recovery bias, where we really want to be saved from the data we see. And so we know that all data has some error associated with it. Any human measurement process has that. E- even every ruler you use has a quality control standard and is off slightly from perhaps another ruler. And so the, the goal is not to, to find the error in the data, but to find the truth that it holds. Additionally, we wanna increase access to available data resources for board members to support your advocacy. Advocacy for both the district, but also for the constituents that you serve. And so we're gonna show you some different resources that you may or may not be aware of, uh, to help you dig a little deeper into some data. Additionally, and lastly, we want to increase awareness of how research and others in the district go about this work. So we had the great opportunity to provide a variation of this presentation to exact council. We work with schools, uh, and part of the, the work today will include a worksheet page. We have a workbook that we work with schools with to help them dig deeper into their data. And when we meet with budding principals in the launch process, this is some of the work we do with them as well, to increase their capacity for data awareness and use. The tools we u- are hoping to use today to get to these goals are in your packets, and I'll walk you through what those are now. As part of our activity, we'll take you to some websites and show you some resources. Those addresses and that information is contained on this small yellow sheet that's in your packets. Additionally, though, I'll give you a teeny bit of history today that we won't be able to necessarily get to for Monday's presentation. Uh, there's also some talking points from the state on the green sheet, uh, relative to their understandings of the state change to the new college and career readiness standards, as well as the changes to the assessment system. Additionally, we have a data sheet, if you will, uh, that shows the results for each school, some demographic information on the, not only the college and career readiness aligned assessments, but also our science assessments still being assessed using legacy standards. You also have your sub-district's, uh, performance for your schools, as well as a, an aggregation by sub-district for you to review. Um, the yellow, lighter yellow sheet, if you will, and it full page stapled, uh, is for the activity. That will become more clear a little bit later on. And then all of this work is couched in the understanding that it feeds into the state's, and it is a primary component of the state's accountability model. Uh, it was recently modified to some degree, as you know, that being AQUEST. It was modified recently to bring it into alignment with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, uh, which replaced the No Child Left Behind variant of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So this all feeds into that funnel as well as other metrics. And so those are the components of your packets. To get us started though, we just wanted to get you thinking and get you talking about some of the things that you know about NSGAS and, and state summit of testing. Uh, but prior to getting that, just give you a real brief background on, on state testing in Nebraska. So we know, we were doing standardized testing in Omaha Public Schools prior to the passage of No Child Left Behind. But what No Child Left Behind did was increase the expectations, in fact, provide the expectations to state Department of Educations, that they needed to do standardized testing and have state standards on critical core and other content areas to be assessed. And so that started in Nebraska, and Nebraska was a unique example, if you will, in this new kind of world that No Child Left Behind brought us. With our student-centered, teacher-led assessment and reporting system, most frequently known as STARS. And, and what that represented was a two-form test, um, for those core subject areas, that allowed the teacher to give the test at the beginning of the year, after some study was done in a content area. And then later on, at the end of the year, or towards the end of the year, as, uh, students had learned, to look for that growth and that difference that students were able to show. Um, there are also reporting expectations that went along with it, because part of the No Child Left Behind, um, change required both the standardized assessment process, but also then a means of reporting that. So that went on for some time, uh, until legislative concerns arose around being able to compare directly between districts and things of that nature, which led to, um, a legislative bill that standardized across schools and across districts, the testing that would be done, which led us to NISA. Uh, the Nebraska State Assessment System that you all likely know quite a bit about, and we did that for quite some time. Um, recently, the most recent changes, uh, in alignment with changes to the much more rigorous college and career readiness standards, uh, was to the NSGAS system, which is the, the reality we're living in at this moment. As assessments be, uh, transitioned to those new college and career readiness standards, math and ELA having both done so, and science to transition fully, uh, from an assessment context in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty, twenty-one. We are still calling it NSGAS, but just know that science is still being assessed under the legacy science standards, has not fully transitioned to those college and career readiness standards. Um, so that is an important thing to know. Um, while the, the assessment, if you will, will go live in twenty twenty, twenty-one, uh, which I've had to practice saying a lot. Uh, we will start seeing some of those item types, the new item types aligned to those college and career readiness standards next year in nineteen twenty. And that's kind of the model we're in, is that when the test is gonna switch, the year prior, students get a little exposure to those test items and the state is able to collect some data. Those are, though, those items are not scored for the student and do not reflect in our results. I thought that was important for you to know. Um, so in that history, is, are there any questions? Kind of ran through that pretty quickly. Okay? Okay. Um, as I foreshadowed earlier, we wanna get you thinking about state testing and just any ideas you have around that. So we're gonna take a minute, and we have some questions up on the wall, four questions in fact. And if you turn to an elbow partner, uh, and talk about these, and then we'll have a, just a brief report out. And this isn't a test at all, it's just to gauge your understanding and awareness of some of these complexities. So the first question is, what do you know about the state test? We'll just give you a minute to chat.
Well, this is what I know, Scott, and I feel really, I'm a teacher of education, frustrating. I do not believe you sign. It always seems like it's right under holiday. Um, I really don't know a lot about the standards. So, um, I really don't, I'm interested in learning more about it. Because obviously, we were used to NISA for so many years. Once we got to know the NISA, then we switched.
Yeah.
The difference between the two and why we chose one over the other. And that just might be our greenness of being on board, that we don't really know that. Um, do we go through all these? What do you think or know the data is about our district's performance? I know that, I was like, when I learned pretty much, I think one of the first presentations when I got on the board, um, which I got sent through shell shocked, was not good. And it opened my eyes to, because I don't know if I can tell you that as much, but just on the other side, it's not good. Lots of room for improvement. When you perceive the challenges to be based on assessment data. Hmm. The challenges. I would say giving an accurate, based on how often this test is given to the students. Um, I mean, I know I hear complaints from teachers that they feel like they spend so much time teaching. We are. We're figuring out all this time. Um, I hear a lot of teachers say that they feel like they're spending time teaching, having kids regurgitate what's going to be on the test, and it's taking away from actual teaching time. So I wonder how much, how much of that, if the data is assessed correctly, given the fact that they do. So I wonder how much, how much of that, if the data is assessed correctly, given the fact that they do it like, I don't know, every three months? I don't even actually know how often they're taking it.
Oh, is the assessment not biased? Do any groups have anything you wanna share about your awareness about the state?
Taking into consideration language barriers and all that.
Good point, good point. What do you want to know more? What do you want to know about?
So I was just talking to Scott about this and so my, my, my observation of the state test is that there's, so you're, you're working toward a standard that the state board has set is really important, which is the ACT. But there's not necessarily vertical alignment in standards or testing to get to the ACT, right? So it's, it's really critical that the steps that are taken by us are separate. I mean, we have to expand, make more rigorous, those vertical alignments. So when you talk to other districts, I think there's definitely a, it, it all comes back to curriculum, right? And professional development. But, so my concern about the state test is that it's not building vertical alignment toward the ultimate goal, which is the ACT. And I've shared that with state board of education members and my concerns about what that looks like and what needs to be done for future generations because I think it's, I think it's an issue. So anyway, that's my.
It's a great observation, you know? The one thing I would add to that is to your point about alignment to the ACT and that you should see kind of that, that vertical transition in this proficiency rates aligning with the proficiency we see at ACT. What we know from the state is that they are very mindful of that from the standpoint of what they feel has happened is we show really great results in elementary and into middle school and then the ACT hits really hard. And our level of proficiency is, is not mirrored by what we see at earlier grades. And so they are going to, in some ways, kind of slow walk the proficiency rates from a psychometric standpoint until they see a greater percentage of students on the ACT at 11th grade hitting higher levels of proficiency. So in some ways, our, our ability to perform high at the 11th grade level on the ACT will help earlier grades from the standpoint of that allows them to kind of ease their expectations. Some of you may have heard me say before, right now, to be college and career ready, you have to be in the top 10% of test takers and that is a really high standard. We'll likely see that soften a bit as performance on the ACT increases. Any other observations about the state test? Technical, otherwise?
I said technical. I said I hear challenges from teachers on the technology side of just administering the test.
Absolutely. You know, there are benefits of having a paper pencil test, but there are also challenges. We have to collect all those materials, make sure all tests are submitted back in and that occupied a lot of our time in the research office certainly, making sure we had a test for every kid and then finding it if we didn't. So there are benefits to technology, but it's, it's not a panacea.
The follow-up is, the majority of us, many of our teachers get their formal education in the state of Nebraska. So is the challenge, or what I know about the state test or what? I don't know. Why doesn't our education system in the state want to educate teachers to try to educate them to kind of be more aligned where this is the goal instead of getting into the job. It's like, alright, now you have to try to get to this. But it's like, if you would've trained me in my four years of education, that this would be a game. I would've been better prepared for some of the challenges that I think I have.
A lot goes into teacher prep, but there's always room for more. I spoke to the CATE folks who certify teacher accreditation industry or units, they're like E and O and others. And they told me a couple of years ago, they weren't going to get anything around data use and data comprehension into their expectations for another six to seven years at least. And so, and this is in the day, the age of big data, if you will, and so just.
Did they say why?
They're still studying the issue at that time, so hopefully the, the study, the studious nature of those folks has moved on a little bit. Speaking of moving on, let's, let's move on to the second question, just give this a couple of minutes thought. What do you think or know about how our results showed from 1718? So what did NSCAST's results look like for us? What, what are your impressions and thoughts? In fact, if you just wanna, without conversation, just call out. Yeah, sure. What do you, what do you know about the results? Have you heard things from constituents? Have you looked at them at all yourselves?
You know, sometimes I, and this is just, when you look at the results, sometime, it, it is what confirms to you that a high-quality teacher in a classroom does a great job. Because I, I just looked at results, knowing the teacher that taught one whole section in a school and then didn't teach. And when you see a 15% drop the next year, then you know, ah, that really does revolve around high-quality teacher in the classroom, which really dedicates information. So I think PD becomes, for me, becomes a really big issue around testing. I don't know if that would be a fair.
Definitely. I mean, I think many things. First of all, I have issues around using the ACT as the state test. Because it's, or the SAT is the aptitude test, it's not. So it won't matter, it's not, it's never gonna align with any district's curriculum because it's not even meant to be given that way. But it's, but it is a fair measure of college readiness. So in that sense, it's fair. I think that the new, the state test, the new, the NSCAST and the standards that they use will, are aligned with college readiness, right? So, I mean, is, that's a way to push, things are two ways to push. The way that you just described or the push on the assessment and then with the hope that, you know what I mean? That the curriculum will align. So I, and having the high-quality teacher is a, is obviously the most important. There's nothing we're gonna do, there's no curriculum that we can buy that, although we do need new curriculum, K to five and especially in language arts. We, a high-quality teacher trumps all of that, so. So we agree, I think, all the way. We just, I'm just, we're talking about it two different ways, but.
Right. At the end of the day, I want kids to be college-ready. And in, in order to be college-ready, they have to be able to take an assessment that shows that they can get into a school as college-ready. So however you get there, needs to be aligned back.
But we, I mean, we are, in terms of our, the new standards do align and they are a lot tougher. And that's one of the reasons I think our teachers have really been pressing us around, they've seen the new standards, they know the new standard. They're teaching, trying to teach to those new standards, but they need the curriculum materials to align because of what they currently have now aligns more to the old NCLP, NISA test. Which is not nearly as.
Not even in the same ballpark.
Rigorous.
No.
Expectations are, I don't know, rigorous is hard to whatever, but the expectations are.
Agreed. You know, and to that point, I would say the McCrell research was brought in by the state to do an alignment study with Common Core, as we'll talk a little bit on Monday. And what they found is that the ELA assessment, up until secondary, well, where it's about as rigorous as Common Core at earlier grades, it's more rigorous than Common Core for our current college and career readiness ELA standard. So that, that's, that's a really rigorous expectation. We kind of touched a little bit on some of the perceived challenges based on the assessment technologies, the PD to get teachers prepared to be able to teach to that. Let's touch on this last question. What more do you wanna know about the assessments and the data that they provide? It's kind of a trick question, we haven't told you a lot about it at this point. So all of it is an appropriate answer at this point, so.
Do you wanna know more about the assessments? How do you, I mean, if you guys can break it down. Looking at just that information, Dr. Owen, I were talking about, the schools that need improvement, you know?
Yeah.
If I'm a parent at a school and it says needs improvement, I'm just like, weird.
Yeah.
What, what does that need improvement? What does good, good mean? What does great mean? What is excellent? What are some of the factors that, I mean, people should know that some of our schools have challenges? And how do we replicate, let's say, the local, right? If local is good and a school down the street needs improvement, what are we doing to identify what local is doing in their work? And how we can replicate that on other schools that might accept their problems?
Absolutely.
I think it might be helpful for us to, I don't know if we could do it on Monday, but very soon, go to board, just for you to see, what is a third grader, what do they need to be able to do in, in, in math? What does a fifth grader need to be able to do? Because I think that it's easy for us to, you know, because I think, I mean, many people have children, all of us remember or sort of remember third grade. And things we were expected to be able to do now. There are, if you look at what you're expected to be able to do, it's like, most people probably don't think that the kids need to know the least common multiple. But they do.
Yeah.
In the third grade. And so those kinds of things, I mean, I think I've challenged, if I just use the term, some adults would have to kind of really think about, you know, least common multiple. You don't use that in your everyday life in terms of, you know what it is, but you don't necessarily use that term. So I think that that could be helpful and I can have a curriculum, that's not for you, Scott.
No, no.
I apologize, but the curriculum department, if it's something that the board would like, I can certainly, I think it would be instructive to the public too, to see, this is what third graders need to be able to do. Maybe in a workshop setting.
Good to hear. Ms. Cracker?
About materials that we're using, that we needed, or we needed before the test or whatever.
Sure.
I think that the last textbooks, the last ones on math, I just think put it aside because I always taught out of three math books, I had two. And I always taught ahead so that my students would already be prepared and know the multiplication facts because they're in there. They hit them and they haven't been that far in their look. In other words. So I always had to, I knew what was in the test, I didn't give them the problem or anything, but we had to prepare them so they knew what they were doing. Otherwise, I know one time, one student just cried, they hadn't had whatever was in that new test.
Sure.
And they just sat there and cried because there was someone who wanted to really do well. And so I think that's what we need to know is if these things are there, how are we going to address that for the teacher to be doing or thinking about doing in the classroom? That's the whole thing about, I always had pretty high math tests and language because I did that sort of thing.
Great observation.
I think that's the whole thing.
Can I follow up with that? I mean, you changed a great point, like what does this board need to do, whether it's policy or like dollars to improve test scores? To really help that teacher in the classroom?
Well, last, last board budget cuts was a great example. I think I talked about curriculum ad nauseam, right? And we cut it. So we, we are behind two cycles from the state in testing, I think, now three. We're using the same curriculum that my 23-year-old used when he was in third grade. We're just way behind, right? So what we need to do as a board is put the dollars where it's going to have the greatest impact on the student. High-quality teacher in every classroom and curriculum and professional development, those are the three things. Everything else is nice, but not necessarily going to drive achievement.
I completely agree with that. I think that is something that as we get closer to budget reductions and what are we, what, where should we be allocating our dollars just to really look at those things? And what are we buying and how we can reallocate funds in the district to really move students to achievement? Because that's the reason why we're all here.
Absolutely.
To student-achieverize, then you just cut out the whole, wrap the whole thing back and lose control.
Okay. Ms. Cracker?
The other thing about the presentation about the third graders, it would also be interesting to just show in math and kindergarten, in first grade and second grade, what do they need to know and here's how it looks in third grade? So that they know, they come in, they don't know their second grade facts. So I have to teach them that because some of the books only went to certain thing with five, say, and go to eighteen with the addition. And so there you go again, you just go backward to teach that and try to go forward at the same time. And it really, it really can make you pretty nervous as a teacher in class. I remember, four times my eye would twitch and twitch because I'd be so nervous about them getting it and doing it and all that, I would worry about that.
I think our schools are better aligned vertically though, so that the teachers are more aware of what they need to know above and below.
We were pretty well aligned, I count in grade school.
But I, I'd say more currently, I would think, I know that our, our grade levels are more aligned vertically and horizontally. And so, again, it comes down to having high-quality teachers in the classroom, having the funds to properly provide those resources and curriculum that we need. And then on top of the professional development that's needed and then just getting through all these assessments. Of course, we can't get past the assessments and so with these three things that we're talking about specifically, I think working together, it will, I mean, eventually it will have an impact. But just right now, we just have to get over these hurdles and, and figure out a way to, to best meet the needs of our students with what we have.
And a lot of these resources that you're talking about exists. The state has table of specifications that indicate every single indicator that's being tested on the state test. We have standards documents that have the vertical alignment that describe exactly what you're saying. Here's the kindergarten standard, here's what it looks like in first grade, when does it stop, when does it start? The other thing that the state has just released are achievement level descriptors that for every tested item on the test, it tells you what's the expectation by performance level. What does an on-track student look like? What does a college and career-ready student look like? And what is a student who hasn't met the expectation look like? And those are all things that, they're tools, but the teachers need time to talk about those tools, work with those tools. And then you've got, you can identify gaps, but we also are responsible for those grade level standards. That's what they're gonna get tested on the state test. And so we have multiple assessments that can identify different needs and it's a balance. The teachers have to balance that every day based on it's gaps that have to be filled and also equity of being exposed to the grade level standards. So one of the things as we transition to the next part is you mentioned, how do we look at one school and see the comparison to another school and be able to see why is one low? Why is one rated needs improvement? Why is one rated as good or great? And one of the tools that we show the public especially and board members that we, we've been going over this with our schools, it used to be called the State of the Schools Report. And it's not, now called the Nebraska Education Profile. So we'd love for you to follow along with us. You can access the state website through our OPS website. So I'm gonna kind of take you on a tour because they have a brand-new tool that's available that does that exact comparison of membership, teachers, years of experience, test scores, things like that. It has the AQuest classification. So if you'd like to follow along, we'll go ahead and start. We can always access everything from our OPS website. If you go up here to the quick links, they will, there's a link directly to the Nebraska Department of Education. There's lots of ways you can search for it, but I always like to go straight to the link from the website. So I'm gonna click on Nebraska Department of Education. And from here, they revamped their site, so sometimes it's a little hard to find things, but from the main page, if I just scroll down, you're gonna see the strategic plan. And if you keep scrolling, it's the Nebraska Education Profile. So this is their brand-new record, all revamped. The data on here was just released on December 21st and so it's live for everybody. I'm gonna click on that button that says view current districts or schools. And this is gonna bring me to the Nebraska Education Profile. Once I'm there, I can scroll down past the state data and it allows me to plug in our district name. And you could actually search for any district, but it's great to, you wanna know what's being said about our district out there in the public. So I'm gonna go ahead and search for Omaha Public Schools. And I'm gonna select Omaha Public Schools. And you're gonna see that they're gonna start loading all this comparison data. They really done a good job with being able to reflect and it has some live tools on the website. Right away, the very first thing you see on the main page is what you were talking about, that AQuest rating. Right here, it tells you needs improvement, good, great or excellent. And this was our AQuest rating that we received this year that was just rolled out on December 21st. Now, the other thing you're gonna notice is if I scroll down a little bit, this first page is really called the snapshot page. Right up here, these are your tabs that you can move through. So right away, you see demographics of our district and you can see how many students we have. The other thing that you see is it has a little gray box here that says peers and your, the state. So right away, you can make a comparison to how many students the state has versus how many students OPS's similar peers have. And that's always a good thing to be able to look at. So they have a lot of demographics. of demographic information. They have the number of teachers. We have program participation. So you can see our percent of free and reduced, our percent of English-language learners, all of those things.
Can you put the peers in there?
Yeah, I'm going to actually go into more detail on it in just a second, but as we go down, the, basically, the state has determined who are your similar peers. And so we'll talk about that when we get there, and we'll see who they've determined similar peers are to our district, but also to every individual schools, they documented that. And so you'll see that because it'll, when you interact, it'll come up live. So as you scroll down, this is just the snapshot page, but as you scroll down, it has other metrics like attendance rate. Here's some of our test scores. And you can see how we compare right away to other, uh, the state and other districts. I'm going to jump ahead. On any one of these, you can click on View Data and get details, lots of details about the different components. But I'm going to scroll up to what Mr. Pearlman's talking about. The next tab is actually your AQuest classification, more data, uh, like what Mr. Snow had talked about. If I click on AQuest, now it's going to give me the six tenants, and it's going to kind of show me where I was getting a plus or minus or, or the status that I had, um, in terms of how I scored on each of these tenants. The other thing, I'm going to go back up to the top and go to that comparison tool. If I click on Compare, this is going to be that Similar Schools. So I'm going to go ahead and click on Compare. And this works whether you're doing an individual school or whether you're doing our district. So I just clicked on Compare, and it asks me, what do you want to compare? When I click on this pulldown tab, I can click Similar Peers or Geographical Areas. I'm going to go ahead and click, click on Similar Peers because I want to see who the state thinks are our similar peers. They have a PDF document here that goes through their whole study of how they determine these. Then I'm going to click on Compare What, and you have all of those different data points. You can compare demographics, program participation, all of those things that were on the cover page. I'm going to go ahead and scroll down to the very bottom that says All Data Points. And then I'm going to click Go. And you're going to see that it's going to calculate whether I had put a school in there, I'm in at the district level. So right away, here's who they say are similar schools, school districts to Omaha Public Schools. We've got Lincoln, Millard, Grand Island, Papillion, Bellevue, Westside, Fremont, Ralston, Carney, Hastings, North Platte, and Norfolk. This first characteristic is our demographics. It gives you the state total here. Here are the total number of students in all of these districts. And so you can see OPS is in the middle there. But you can see as similar peers, how similar are we in terms of, uh, the total number of students? You can see how we compare. You can see how we compare to our similar, uh, in teacher numbers. ELL participation, free and reduced lunch. If you scroll down, you're going to see that comparison of the similar peers. The other thing that you can do, in your folders, we put a data book from one of the schools in your sub-district. So you may want to put in, up here, if you search this information by an individual school. So I'm just going to click on, I'm going to type in Belvedere. And if I want to see similar schools to Belvedere, I would go to Compare, and I'm going to say I want similar peers. And then you'd be able to see how Belvedere compares to the other schools that the state says are similar to them. And so you could do this with any one of the schools in your sub-district and see, sometimes you're going to see a comparison to other OPS schools, but sometimes you'll find a comparison to schools outside of our district, just because those are the ones that they, uh, found were most like yours. But this is a tool that parents are going to be using to look at our schools when they're trying to figure out what school they want their students to go to. They might search by geographical area for district, um, but they may be determined to look at student enrollment, the number of teachers they have, the percent of teachers they have, the demographics. They're going to look at things like test scores. They've got all of this that you can see right here on the website, but everyone in the public can see. And so we have to be aware of what's out there about our schools and be able to explain when we get questions. The other thing that has been some aha moments, I think, for some of our principals and, uh, some of the academic data reps that we work with, is to see that they didn't realize how alike or how different they were maybe to other schools. They didn't know that the student population was similar in another school, or maybe how different it was. They might not have known that another school had, you know, five thousand students, or two thousand, or three hundred, or things like that. So they're starting to be able to recognize who may be more like them than they thought. This is one data source that we use in our district, uh, that we send parents to, to be able to access the data. The one thing about the data on the state report is it's all last year. So you have to be very careful and know what year it is. Up at the top, though, you can change, um, the year. If you wanted to go back and see some other data from a different year, you can do that. Has anyone already been out there before to look up data on the old one? You can see there's been a little bit of a change. And it's kind of nice. The icons are more friendly. Um, on your yellow card, somebody asked about knowing a little bit more about AQuest. There is a whole website on AQuest that has some really nice brochures. Some of the brochures that we gave you in your folder that are printed nice in color, those resources are out on the AQuest website. Um, they really do kind of tell you how AQuest is rated, how you get that good rating. It shows you, um, what it means if you are designated as a school of improvement or a school that's CSI or targeted support, those types of things. So there's a lot of information. I see Mrs. Gadding's looking at the school data book. Would you hold that up?
Yeah.
Everyone has access, the public has access to every single school's OPS data book. And so we, um, that, we also have access from the OPS website. So if you didn't know that, that you could access every one of your schools in your sub-district, that their data books are out there, all you have to do is go to, um, again, to Departments on our OPS website. These are all located on the Research website, which is actually under General Finance, Finance and Administrative Services. So I'm going to scroll over and go down to Research. Oops. And we're at the very bottom, if you see that. I don't have a mouse. So I have to go down to Research. And then once you're on our Research page, and you could probably just search for Research as well, but if you click on Assessment, you're going to see School Data Books. There's a tab for it. And when you click on that, it's going to bring up, we have the school data books posted all the way back to 2009. So you can see in 2017, you could up, download every single data book for all of our schools. And this has a lot more data than what's on the, um, state website. Um, it has a little more, um, of the data that we release to schools, um, in terms of attendance, mobility, things like that.
Climate surveys.
Yep, climate surveys in there. So you have easy access to all of your schools. If you have a computer and you wanted to look up, you know, when you're going to visit a school, you could quickly look up the information. Um, we have a lot of quick, easy reports in there that are easy to read and a lot of background information. Yes?
I didn't know that this, they had data that you disintegrated already, so you could just collect, um, parents in the military, homeless.
Yeah, are you talking about on the state website?
Yeah.
Yes, and in fact, I was trying to rush through, but on any one of these, if you were on the main page, I'm back in the similar peers, so I'm going to go back to the regular. On any one of those, when you hovered over and it said, "View Details," you can get tons of details.
That you get really detailed.
So let's, I'm just going to go to Adams. At any time, if you hover over and it, it says, "View Data", just going to wait for it to load. When I click on View Data, that gets me to the menu page. You see this left-hand side of the menu up here? You can go in and get details about NSCAS. You can get all their, uh, different rates, demographics, trend data for multiple years. You can get information, we talked about highly-qualified teachers, all the teacher data is out there. So if you want to see how the teacher population has changed in a building, when we did this at launch, we found that in one building, they used to have, you know, twenty years as the average experience, and now they're like at seven. That means something has changed in that building. And how that impacts, it could be positive and negative impacts when you have teacher changes like that, where the whole average years of experience changes over a year. So it's definitely worth exploring. Um, and they do a lot of hovering where you can get more information. And if you ever have a question about a, a number you see on here, sometimes there are errors, but, um, and we do contact the state on that. But a lot of this comes from our own systems. We feed the data in, and then the state reports it. So what we really wanted to get across is that we have a lot of data resources that we use with staff. And we do, uh, work with principals. We work with, we have a role called the Academic Data Rep, and we meet with them monthly to go through this and do some of that analysis. And then they take it back to their buildings and they work with their teachers. Um, and so, um, you know, data is always on the forefront.
So we gathered all this data. This might be a question for Dr. Logan. How do we, how do we use this data? Or how are we using this data?
So, I think in two ways. One, uh, with the, for me, for me, what NSCAS does the best is show the disconnect between, um, the lack of alignment between instruction and assessment. Because this is a, uh, it's a postmortem. The kids are this way, these kids took this test almost a year ago, and those kids are not sitting by a teacher. So we, the math data for my purposes, and that's why we did that one first, is really what teachers should be using. And there is correlative information between how kids do on the math and what we could, uh, correlate on how we feel they would do on that. And it's really about changing it. It's changing instruction. If kids are, you get reports, you know what domains kids are not going to well, then that could give you information about, um, take your weakness and where teachers may need to be developed. Or, um, it can also give you information around vertical alignment with your first and, and your second grade being prepared. I think Dr. Logan's comments and, um, uh, Nancy's comments were actually really around, you know, if kids aren't prepared for third grade, there's a lot of remediation that needs to be done. So I think that that's what it tells, it tells them where, where you should go next. But I would say that you could use the formative assessments that are given during the school year while you actually have the kids in front of you, um, is the best way to use it. Um, and then I think, I think I may have said, said this, instruction and what curriculum. If we don't, if you're not using the correct con, if you don't have access to the correct kinds of curriculum resources to facilitate that instruction. So I would say, like, for example, this year, because we did have to postpone the adoption another year, um, and, you know, when you're postponing, postponing one is actually postponing two. That's why someone said two and I said three, because when you adopt, so we'll, we'll, perhaps we'll adopt this, this in, in next year, because we'll put the, perhaps, uh, no, we, if we do, um, then the, um, that's a board decision, you know. I'll make a recommendation, but the board will decide. So that's why I'm saying it that way. Um, we will make a purchase and, and, uh, we'll go to, actually, we're in RFP right now, anticipating, hopefully, because we want to be prepared in case the, the funds are there. And we'll adopt. We will start receiving materials, um, fall-ish, and you use kind of that year to receive materials and to train everybody so that you can, um, be ready for a hard start in what will be 2021 at that point. See what I'm saying? So that's why, that's why, the, the one, the lag is huge, it's a big lag. You have some schools who will get the resources in the fall, and we'll be able to start incorporating them, the super-high flyers, and, you know, go a little faster, but just generally, you really want to have, and it's actually, it's year two of a rollout. The most, year one is important, but year two is a critical year because at that point, people know where all the materials are. They know, but during year two, they really, uh, refine, um, and go much deeper on how to really use the materials and, um, the alignment of those materials with the assessments. So that's way more than you probably want to know.
No, it's very, it's very helpful, especially breaking down textbook adoption, which is something.
Is that a little bit of a commercial?
Well, and my concern is always, when you push one back, you push another one back. Because, you know, we pushed back ELA, but we were also due, I think, for science in the next year or something like that.
Social studies should be close to that.
So we're, you just create a problem for yourself when you don't have.
Chain reaction.
I think when, I think boards who have solid board policy, that they will adopt every eight years or whatever number of years it is.
Let's go to it.
Into the school districts where you see really good, um, assessment data because they have stayed very true to the mission of providing the resources that children need to be successful.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I would like to ask that we just do some kind of a brief thing with NSCAS, just to make, I don't care if it's huge, but I think it is important to share with the public. I mean, I certainly have constituents who use the site and who also use the data book. But I think just to introduce people again to where they can go, so whether it's just putting it out there on the website as far as in, in the board presentation, you know, here's, here's websites for you to get to. And, and I think the data books are really buried in OPS because you really have to, you have to get there. I'm sure it's intentional sometimes, but, um, I get it. But, um, I have parents who find them, so, um, it'd be good just to be transparent with everybody.
So there's the presentation on Monday, correct?
You just have to create another slide from that.
To, to, to some people, to show people how to navigate your year.
To the data book and to the website.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you can do it.
No problem.
What slide?
May I do slides today? I'm happy to make a diagram. That one's an easy one. The subgroup one, just took a little more time to tease out.
Do you guys want to take a break or power through or? Okay, let's do a five-minute break.
Thank you. This was helpful.
Okay, where did you find the demographics of the question? Is it aggregated?
Also two assessments. And, um, the strategic plan, Scott, because I'm going to have to leave and come back because he's leading part of that. So we'll jump down to D6. Um, and actually, we, the objective is to have a discussion of, we're not doing a strategic plan right now, but we're starting the beginning works, obviously. And, uh, in the past, remember when we did a previous strategic plan? How many, um, indicators did we have? Hundred and fifty-six. So, uh, it was very ambitious for us to do that. Um, but looking back, I'm sure we could all agree that.
Too big.
Makes that simplify a little bit and make it a little more focused. Uh, will help not just the board, but will help the district on some of these big ticket items that we have to accomplish over the next five years. All right, so, Dr. Logan, I believe you're going to lead this with Scott.
Yeah, so what we wanted to do was, um, to really, um, first of all, use this opportunity for you to see some plans and then to get the, uh, board's input, um, as we begin the process to, to start on the next version of our, um, strategic plan. So we always want to begin with, where are you? So what, um, Scott's going to review today is the score, the current scorecard. Uh, and, um, I will say that it says draft on there because it's not yet totally complete, because there's still some data, data that's not in yet that we need to, uh, have, have a complete, uh, scorecard. I believe that we're anticipating about mid, late March for the, uh, entire scorecard to be done. Um, but we feel like we have enough now to start the conversation because we really need to get going on this, uh, process. And, uh, we'll have Scott start. Please feel free to ask, there's, it's free-flowing. Uh, once he's finished going over the scorecard, then I'm going to kind of go over the timeline. Have you get in groups of two or three. I think three is, you can almost get in three or two. or two, to kind of look at the plans and kind of say, this is, these are some aspects of these plans that I like. We chose the, a plan that was more similar to what the district did and then two that, one that I feel was aspirational and then one from Lincoln as well because I want to make sure we had one plan that was from Nebraska. So Scott, you can go and get going and then we'll, I'll come up after you.
So let's belabor Joyce, Carol Oter, Bob Dylan, but to know where you're going, you got to know where you've been. And in this instance, what we know is we have a very metric rich. Robert Zimmerman, come on, you know the guy. So this is certainly a metric rich document.
It is.
And so first we start off with some, really some upper level secondary information, looking at grad rates. And we know these vary quite a lot across our district, but looking at the aggregate rate of performance for seventeen eighteen, from a statistical standpoint, it's very similar to what we saw in sixteen seventeen, though it did numerically drop less than one percent. So we've kind of held strong around the seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent range since going back as far as fourteen, fifteen, really not that far from it in thirteen, fourteen. A lot of things contribute to that and we're digging deeper into certainly the data around it. Looking at students who are graduating from high school within five years, so taking out an extra year, the first metric being around four years, we do see that we do have a much greater amount of success with getting students graduated going into five years and beyond. We know that many of the students who come to us really late in their educational process, especially those who come with language needs or having not had much formal schooling, we see a high success rate with them going out even to six years. One thing OPS does is we stick with them and we will get them graduated in any possible way we can. And looking on the percent of students who are on track to graduate, that too has kind of hovered around that seventy-nine to eighty percent mark. This year we're right at eighty percent. Last year we were nearly at eighty-one percent. When I say this year, I mean seventeen eighteen, the year of reference here. And so still quite a ways away from that, the goal that we set, a very, I would say lofty goal on many of these metrics as we're guided to do. Decrease the percentage of students who are dropping out of school each year. You know, one thing I'll say as we looked at the NEP is we do a lot of work to help them with their data and in fact, they should be changing it because right now it shows our dropout rate as point one one, which it did go down a little bit to two point seven seven, but it isn't quite to point one one yet, though we would like to see that. So we did see a little bit of improvement in our dropout rate. Some of the data that we're still working on collecting is around those industry certifications, both the kids who take a course that could allow for that as well as those who actually received that, be it CNA certifications, work lift certifications, things of that nature. That's kept at the school level in various formats. We're working to pull that together and there also is a little bit of a lag in getting the data back on when those certifications were achieved, be it the summer or otherwise. As far as taking courses offered at high school for college credit, we've seen an uptick on that, which is good to see, especially as we've, we've observed over the years kind of a balancing effect, if you will, between those taking courses for career focused efforts and college focused efforts. We did get a slight uptick on that by almost two and a half percent in seventeen eighteen versus sixteen seventeen. So that is good information. As far as earning college credit for those dual enrollment opportunities, we see as well that those kids, about half of our students are having that success. And so that's getting close to our goal of fifty-five percent with a forty-nine point three eight for seventeen eighteen, which is up over a percent from sixteen seventeen. As far as our, our students who are enrolled in post-secondary education, we're still collecting that data, but we do see that there was a slight downtick in sixteen seventeen that we hope to see a recovery from, but that information is still being collected as we speak through our grad follow-up process. In fact, callers are probably down there right now. Increase the average ACT composite. Both ten and eleven are connected in many ways, to the extent that with the state transitioning the eleventh grade test to the ACT, a vast number of our graduates now are leaving our home learning with an ACT score and an opportunity perhaps to go to college with that. And so given that we are now testing entirety of our eleventh graders, nearly so, with upwards of ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent testing rates, we did see a little bit of a downturn in our ACT test scores, having gone now to a hundred percent of our graduates in seventeen eighteen, leaving with an ACT test score. And that has corrected to sixteen point nine from a high of nineteen point one.
I have a question on that. If the student doesn't show up to take the test, does that go in as a zero or does it not count against the school?
You know, it, it, it does count against.
Yeah.
But what I'll tell you is our schools know that and they will find them. So for example, we, we have the test day where it's a paper pencil testing opportunity. Then they have two weeks, Tuesday through Thursdays, to catch the child and sit them down and have an opportunity to do as many of the subject tests as they can. We work with schools to set up testing environments to allow that opportunity and then we have one last testing day at the end of that two week period for computer-based testing. And so the, the schools are really committed to this and that's why I say we get upwards of ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent completion rates.
But Luann's, Luann's point, I just want to point out that the pass rates on the other dates are significantly lower.
Correct.
When kids take the makeup test or take it outside the, the main window.
It's gotta be.
It's huge and so I want to say it's really, it's in the single digits for the pass rate for, for kids who don't take it on that actual day. So it's real important that we make sure our parents know and that our kids know, but we, I think also, and this is kind of a little guesstaddy outside of whatever, but I wanted to do a discussion to, for them to understand what they can get out of, what information they can get from taking the ACT. So because they take it in eleventh grade, they still have another year where they can work on their college readiness.
Absolutely.
They can have agency because they will get scores, they will get modules in Khan Academy that, that are specific to the areas where they didn't, where they didn't do well. They can set, set goals in that app around how much they want to increase their score and this is how much time they would need to spend on test prep or, you know, on, on prepping and other activities they should do, just like reading for pleasure to, to, to improve that score. So I think that one of the, the things I'm excited about, about this and our senior, we're going to do a senior exit survey this year, which we're really excited about. We're going to get a lot of data, so every single senior will be able to find out a lot about what their school, their K-12 experience was, is, will be was at that point, around these kinds of, these kinds of issues. You know, not just what was your EnsCAS score or your ACT score, but like, do you just, in terms of your way on, your own feeling, prepared to, or you feel like you're prepared for college? Because I think sometimes that connection, us understanding what the connection is around what their score says and what they think is a huge data point.
Absolutely.
I'm excited. So I guess to you, to your, what you were just saying, so I know that I asked the question.
I'm excited. I'm sorry, this stuff gets me excited. This is exciting. This is what it's all about. Yay.
So I asked the question and I, and I, and I wonder if we've done anything on this or if the state's done anything on this. When you take the ACT, you can get your, certain test dates, right? Get your test book back and get your score sheet back. So I would think that for state testing of the ACT, that would just be the no-brainer, right? That you give the booklet back and give the score sheet back so that whether it's teachers, parents can actually see the questions around what's being missed. So I'm wondering if, I know I asked last year if we were pursuing that. And then the second question I have is, how are we effectively, because I'm not seeing it yet, through counseling, providing instruction to parents, information to parents on resources available? And I think back to the PSAT, you know, our sophomores, parents still have not heard, seen anything. Other districts are fully aware of Khan and moving forward. I want our kids to be just as equipped on that. Our, our national merit numbers are so low compared to how many kids we have. And I know it's, you know, a certain percentile, but you can drive that number up by using Khan Academy. And so I guess I would encourage the district from a, like you were just saying on the ACT component, what are we doing to communicate with parents on those resources and what are we doing even through the state to drive better data back to us?
Well, I actually asked that question of our secretary folks and they gave me a nice detailed answer that I will pass along to you because I asked that question myself because we took a whole day out of school. For me, it was like we took a whole day out of school.
For what?
We had three grades not come.
Right.
What did we get at the end of that in terms of the follow-up?
Right.
Because just taking the test. I, I don't know. I wonder about the utility of giving the test booklet and the score sheet. I wonder if the, the current, the, the electronic data that they can give you around the areas you didn't do well in and the connection to the modules is, I mean, I can see the, I do see, I just don't know how people would actually use that, right?
Right. So, so I'm the one who buys it for my kid and has him send it to me and then we go through every question and say, okay, do you understand why you missed that question, right? If it's not getting used, you're right, then the utility is not good.
Well, I think that that's, that's good, but I'm thinking about, you know, I'm all about student agency, so I'm thinking about how kids would want to interface with me, some sort of electronic something or something they can do on their phone. Because a lot, I was floored in my former district of how many kids were using Khan Academy on their phone.
Oh, unbelievable.
Yeah, so, right, and that goes, right. So I, I think we have some opportunity here with the fact that we just went through the first cycle of the pre-ACT and we're, and also to work with some of our community partners on how they can use some of that data in some of the Saturday programs or after-school programs or kinds of interventions that they have to work with our, our kids, or something the kids already have. So they don't need to create this other thing. They can just, and it's very high quality.
You know what I would, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was looking even at when we're taking college classes, I mean, I was unaware that Khan Academy had a really great AP World module. And so my son and his friend both decided, ah, if we're going to do well on the AP test, we better get on Khan Academy because we're not fully exposed to everything we need to know, right? Even out of the classroom, because it's a lot of material. So I guess my question is, how are we communicating those resources to parents and how are we effectively ensuring that our kids even? I mean, we've got kids who are savvy in technology and realizing, oh, this is where I need to pick up because I want to pick up a scholarship. But everybody should be, have that ability to have that access.
You know, I can tell you, I, that's prior to coming to you, I was in a meeting with counseling curriculum and research, talking about those very topics of the development of lessons around when are students going to be taught? One, how to be aware and interpret what's in their report, but then also how to utilize that and to move your scores forward utilizing the resources we purchased and have available for them. We're aligning it to an evaluative process where we see how well our expectations that we've shared with principals in a very back and forth iterative way. We'll meet with them again on the twelfth to talk through how things are working and the plans we've rolled out, but also to see, you know, were kids able to engage? What did they think about the materials? What's their self-reported level of interaction with them? We've had some trouble getting data on access from mobile devices, but we know that lots of kids are using mobile devices.
That's where you, that's where your, that's where your senior exit survey comes in this, that's where you're going to get, you can capture that. You have to have some systematic way to do it. Just asking ad hoc, every school is not going to do it. And I'm just going to, I'm going to keep coming back to, and I love the idea of the lessons in school, but kids learn asynchronously now, whenever they want to learn, right? And so how do we think about, I can, I can do this at ten o'clock at night or I can do it at ten o'clock in the morning because I don't, there's not one person holding all the knowledge, like in the bad old days. They can actually pick the device up and there's a lot they can learn from it, so.
That's very point I raised. Are we even letting kids know they should be doing that as part of this, like first thing?
Scott, so I remember last year at one of the North Omaha community meetings on Saturday at North High School, you were presenting about ACT to parents. And I remember asking that very same question, how do parents receive this information? How do they know about the ACT? How do they know how prepared? And you mentioned about our guidance counselors and things essentially being the primary ones to get this information out. Do you think that, that has been effective just with the utilization of our guidance counselors or what is their communication process? Is there some standard process in how they are delivering this information to parents so that they know? I mean, I, I know about Khan Academy only because my daughter's in school in elementary and her teacher tells me about her, what have you, but it's a completely different dynamic in, in high school. And so how would parents know about Khan Academy or any other type of extra resources that might be beneficial and helping to prepare their, their children for the ACT or any type of follow-up that you would be able to do to better prepare?
You know, I think it, it takes all things. So first and foremost, when we send a report home with the child, one, you have to ask if that's the best way to do it, but letting folks know, hey, the report's coming home with your child today. Check for it either in their bag or on the floor of their carola, I mean, wherever it ends up. And so we have explored with ACT, being able to get additional copies of those individual student reports because part of the problem is if we only have one, we either mail them to the thirty-five hundred or so students who took the test. And then the parent has it, we don't know if the child gets it because to utilize those resources, we're equipping the student to enter their information into those Khan Academy resources. They have to be hand-entered essentially. And so the child's assented, enters those as part of this process. Now, as far as the information getting home, we rely on our district communications and their support, especially around awareness of the testing day. Now, as far as, you know, how to use those results and our expectations for students, I don't think we could ever do enough.
I'm going to send, I'm going to try to remember to include it this week if I'm, try to remember this, because, because I did have them provide me a narrative of all of the follow-up because we had taken the whole day out of school. So that'll be helpful. I'm going to press on it one more time. One of the things about the way that Khan kind of conceptualized his work was really that it's about the learner accessing the skills, right? So accessing the tools. So, you know, I mean, this is different in the way, because, you know, we, you know, expected to kind of be very dependent on a teacher. So I just, I'm just going to keep reiterating that, so, because I've asked them, because when they gave me their long response, I said, okay, now that's all good, fine and good, but this is, this tool is not designed for that kind of intervention. It's designed for the kid to access it. So I will send that to the board and I think we have a lot of more, not more work to do, but the more we can do to not just to, to let our parents know as well as our kids, you know, because I mean, you, your son's in high school, he has a lot of agency. He knows how to go and find stuff.
Right. And so I guess that's where, especially like on the PSAT, are they telling kids when they, the day they take it, okay, now when you get your test score back, load it into Khan and then Khan's going to send you questions specific to what you missed and you're going to be able to raise your score and you may become national merit, you may, you may land, you know, ten, twenty, forty thousand in scholarship money. That drives a kid to say, oh, maybe I should do this, right? And if you tell the parent, I guess, my concern is that I, we're just still not communicating that piece of it. And talking to sophomore parents this year, they don't even know you can load. They should know you can load.
Because I don't know, when, when they, on, when they take the ACT, do they have an option between electronic or paper pencil? Is it all electronic or is it all paper pencil?
On the eleventh grade date, it's all paper pencil for that first ACT test day. They then do some paper pencil throughout those two weeks and the final day is electronic day.
Okay.
So they, they haven't given a ton of flexibility as far as, you know, if you want to do some of each, plus making sure all test site coordinators and all teachers supporting them or training.
Your technology risk?
What's that?
Your technology risk. It's huge if you're not doing paper pencil without many kids.
It can't be.
It's a cheap.
You know, I would say, yeah, but our tech is going to be better.
Sorry, Scott.
Oh, no, you're good.
We're on time, right?
Speaking about engagement, so we, we have a couple of metrics that we capture from the student engagement inventory, just to quickly touch on them. We see good results coming from the most recent distribution. We see good results coming from the most recent distribution in 17, 18 with an uptick in our level of connectedness to the school environment and commitment to learning, as well as the increase to the number of students who we find are highly engaged based on their own personal responses. The number of students opting out of the district has held fairly constant around that 6,000 student mark for quite some time. We saw a little bit of a downward trend as some of the transportation elements of that inter-district transfer have gone away, but we're still sitting at a solid 6,000 students, which around 9,000 per student is what, around $54 million in funding? And that's not the only reason. We have excellent programs and great diversity here that we're not exposed to, so reducing that number is important.
And these are just option students, not private school students?
Correct. These are students who are leaving to go elsewhere.
To go to other public schools?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I got, I have a quick question.
Yeah, please.
Like, how are the 18 and 19 targets being developed? They're kind of all over the place, all of them, the targets for 2018?
Oh, sure. Those were developed at the very beginning of the process. So, when we first started into the strategic planning game, the one example, or the one difference, I would say, is around the engagement ones, which I added this year because they've been TBD forever. And that speaks to how we developed them in the first place, which is to say, through guidance from a consultant, you said you're doing 258 new strategies, you need to set aggressive targets to try to hit. And so, that's where we ended up with those. This consultation with the subject matter editors in the various departments and consultant.
So, they were never revised?
No, they were, and that was part of it, is you're going to set these goals at the beginning and these are going to be the goals. Perhaps, yeah, really, I don't recall ever having a conversation about modifying it after we hit them or did not or something like that.
And if I'm correct, I think most of the goals, as the board did give guidance, the district set some, most of these goals.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I mean, it was.
Which is appropriate.
Which is appropriate. I'm just saying that these goals weren't set by board members. The district initially wanted, assuming that they can reach these goals.
They were approved by the board, not set by the board.
Do we know how many goals were met?
It's the, it's the green.
The green dots?
Yes.
Well, that's just approaching the goal.
Approaching the goal.
So, if you make good progress, you get a green dot or a star if the metrics changed at some point since we started calculating it. There have been modifications to testing and how we've calculated some of these metrics over time, errors of that nature. Wanting to be transparent about it, we try to highlight those so you know and can ask for about those.
So, no, no goal was met?
I mean, as far as the number of kids taking the ACT, I'd say we crush that one.
Well, yeah, it's the law. I hope so. Okay. And I guess, I guess I have another question, but you're not to that page yet. It looks like for the, for the achievement gap, it looks like we didn't have any data for four years.
Well, that's the change of testing. So, you'll see later on the legacy assessment, which you're looking at there, our minds are interested. Yeah, that's ELA. So, we transitioned to the ELA assessment in 16, 17. The reading data that occurred in the years prior to that is later on in the report.
Okay.
And so, that, we didn't have that. We saw it coming to some degree, but we didn't have it when the plan was created. You know, that's part of it, is these things live in time. You create them, pass them, it's set in stone in many ways. And in education, lots changes every year.
Just thinking about what you were just going over with the ACT and all that, can we at a board meeting get data on ACT, AP, and PSAT and, you know, if there's anything else so that we can see from, get data on high school achievement from some of those key indicators, just to see where we're, how we're doing? And maybe what our supports and help? I feel like curriculum probably, the high school is not off too far. AP curriculum has to be.
AP curriculum is pretty specific.
It is what it is, right?
I think we have some opportunities to do more and what has happened in districts who have really done well with increasing AP scores is they've gotten the PD, they do the PD directly from AP as opposed to the train from trainer model. That doesn't really work. So, you have AP come and the best way in this, for me, in this, for this district would be to use a regional approach and to get with my colleagues and say, okay, we're going to bring in AP folks and do the training here for the five, the top five that kids take. Because that's, that moves the needle better than, than any other, any other kind of, for Ivy, you can't do that, they won't come. You have to go to where they are.
Right.
Unless you're in a really big metro. But for AP, they will come, especially with a regional approach. And it's cost-effective if you, the more people you have, it's cost-effective. But it's very good training, the best, if not, not the best.
Oh, that's awesome.
I was just looking at assessment results fairly quickly. As I was saying, we've had quite a bit of change, as you know, in the assessment area. And so, that's kind of messed up our reporting on the scorecard to the extent that we do have both new and legacy tests reported here. So, on this first block, the first math and reading, you'll notice in 17, 18 says new test, which then is moved to the bottom with math and ELA results. Can tell you, looking at our 16, 17 to 17, 18 performance, is similar to what we saw at the state level and staying course and in many cases, correction back down. As the state has told us, they've gone through, they were able to hire a psychometrician who has since left them, but at the time he was here, he was able to move into a greater, I can't remember his DECA percentiles. They, they did some statistical work behind the scenes that they have said themselves that could have impacted scores in a negative sense this year. That's not to say this all is related to that. Speaking especially about the ELA results from 16, 17, where we found 35% proficient in the first year of the test, dropping to 33 in 17, 18. And we'll get more into the 17, 18 data on Monday, obviously.
And are we going to look at this stuff on Monday? Is this part of, will the scorecard be on? Because I've had.
Not the scorecard, no. We have some subgroup data, but nothing directly at GAPS, just subgroup performance.
So, I've had people ask about the scorecard. Is it something we can just stick on the agenda for Monday or not?
It's not. There's still stuff.
Not? Okay. Got it.
We're not presenting this yet.
Okay.
The scorecards aren't ready yet.
Not ready? Okay. Okay.
So, we look at our gaps, as I really said, from an ELA standpoint, most of them stayed very similar from a statistical point, in many instances, not any different at all. Gaps did widen racially across almost all groups by 1%, 2%. Some of these groups, like the Native American or American Indian, as is listed here using the state's nomenclature, it's a very small cohort of students within the district, so you can see a greater level of proportion for some of these smaller groupings.
I have a question about magnitude of effect because we have, the number of Hispanic students has increased tremendously from the 13 to the 18, 19 and how you feel about how that's showing up in the data. So, I was looking at a school and they were, they were touting their scores, looking at five years, and I'm like, well, you have different kids. So, those aren't, they aren't the same kids. So, it's, it's, what do you think about that? Or what can, what should you, in terms of the board, what should they be thinking about?
You know, I would say in, in so much of this data, especially as you dig down to more granular levels, individual groupings, especially individual groupings within schools, you're much better off looking at a trend or an average of a number of years to get a sense where, where groups are at, certainly. But you have to also take into consideration the number of changes, et cetera, within testing. And so, when we look at summative test results and things of that nature, you can look at them at an aggregate level to get an understanding of, you know, where district processes have started to impact or influence things. But it is one data point. And so, it's challenging because we know that the state test is sensitive to some things and insensitive to other things. And so, it is about taking in a myriad of metrics available to you, be it more formative type math data, to see how we're progressing and growing students towards greater levels of proficiency and then getting an understanding of where the cohorts of students are at moving through the system. So, as you look at grade-level data comparing, you say, 16, 17, third grade, how did that class look in fourth grade when you get 17, 18 data? So, you can kind of drill into some of those cohort effects to say, you know, is this a change that the system has made to influence these students? And knowing that those things take time. So, if we change anything, we have to get through awareness, changing behavior and practices. Students have to recognize that and has to be resolved improvement, so that does take some time. Mr. Snow?
So, once this all comes complete and given to the board, I mean, I have a, I mean, this is probably a question for Dr. Logan. I know there has, we used to give out those awards at those schools. And I know we went away from that. Do we, it just wouldn't correlate with some of this? People see the date they got it and then pulled up this.
We aren't using those awards anymore?
No, we're not. And we'll have a new way of probably recognizing schools.
Recognizing schools around, yeah. So, one of the things that we know that we need to do is create our internal, our own internal kind of school progress report. We have some state data that we could use, for example, schools' ratings. We have several schools who went up in ratings. That's one way we could think about it. The other would be to include part of our own progress, to have that be a part of our own progress report. There are many qualitative things we can add on to our school report card in terms of how parent participation in climate surveys, student participation in that, student participation in extracurriculars. There's lots of different ways that we can think about how we, to get, to come up with some sort of, some sort of algorithm where we can say, okay, this school is making improvement or this school, we decided based on a lot of different factors, is doing well.
And is that something that, moving forward, obviously, this is the first year, that could be ongoing updates or receive reports for the board so we know how schools are going? So, it's not?
I think we put them in our strategic plan.
In our strategic plan, so, I probably jumped on the ball on that, but.
No.
Just to make sure because it allows us to be more aware of everything that is exactly happening as we go through the process.
We can use your map data, we can look at, we could add, you know, negative growth as a, as a, as a heavy indicator because schools that are making negative growth, that's a huge indicator that something is wrong in that school, so.
We'll probably have to rely on you on what data to actually look at.
And our, and our psychometricians are, yeah, so, they're much smarter than me, so. Okay, so, what I want to do now is transition to strategic planning and how the board would like to proceed. We have a recommendation and want to get your, your thoughts on that. But what we're going to start off with is please, in groups of two or three, you have three, three plans, right? Actually, you know what we're going to do? Are you, the two of you going to be together?
Sure.
Okay, so, the two of you, if you could look at the Tulsa plan, okay? And tell me the things that you like about the Tulsa plan. You get about eight minutes to look at it.
Eight minutes?
About eight, eight, we can give you 10.
That's a lot of minutes.
Okay, that's fine. It's enough time. It's enough time. Siobhan and Nancy and Tracy, if you can look at the St. Paul plan, if you can look at the St. Paul plan. And then I'm going to have you all look at the Lincoln plan. The three of you would look at the Lincoln plan. So, you have eight minutes to look at the plan. Tell me about things that you like.
Okay, we're, we're St. Paul.
I was doing, I was not. I'm sore.
Okay, sure.
All right.
There's such a high achieving.
Well, you'll see what I'm talking about.
All right.
Let's put it next right.
Can I get my thing?
Okay.
Eight minutes, people.
Here's our strategic.
You have eight minutes.
I guess we could start from the beginning.
Just got three strategies.
Yeah.
Start looking at what we like.
I like that they have.
Who?
Actually, I don't know. So, what would be good?
That's what I'm hoping that.
Actually, I don't know. Is it timeline? Sure, is that a good thing?
Yeah.
As far as the implementation stuff, but I don't.
At least five years, but I think this is like their IT development.
Yeah.
And to be outcomes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we identify.
I'll be, I'll be.
Like, if resources permit, increase stock.
Any, I don't know.
Can we start exploring any partnerships?
So, they're very, they're much more.
My question is, do you have to make?
Have to make.
Five focus areas.
So, I like that there are five focus areas.
Well, like, which one gets, and then they have the objective needs.
Yeah, I like how clear that is.
That's what I, yeah.
How do you think, okay, do you want?
Maybe it's not good, maybe.
Look at my, which one you like?
Have their measures.
You want like any of them?
Really? I mean, I'm wondering, I guess, I didn't look online to see if there's more details.
Yeah, they have, they have, these are all detailed.
Oh, okay. So, I was saying, wow, it's very, okay, because I said, wow, it's very aspirational without outcomes, but online.
Yeah, they have all the outcomes, that's for Lincoln, yeah. St. Paul, I think, embed their outcomes. And their plan is actually 160 pages. They condensed it down to this public view because they felt this is what the public needed.
And even, even within their.
Not all that detailed.
They don't have a lot of objectives.
They don't.
Yep, mhm, yep.
So, do they leave a match?
No, some of them have a couple more, yeah. Some of them, well, no, maybe not because, well, there's ten objectives.
Nope.
Career path, career.
Actually, we're going to probably engage David and help us.
It's continuous, isn't it?
David Traumber, you can meet him at the CEO candidate, he's like a huge strategy.
This is probably your easier one. Yeah. Shows you. Focus area, objective, objectives, so you can see how many objectives we have under each one, right?
Mm-hmm. We selected a controller, but not. Yeah, we're going to.
Yeah.
Open and select the CEO or.
I need to.
Okay, we have six candidates, six candidates, I think.
I tried to do that on the board. I said, I said.
June 30?
I wonder if they're long-term outcomes, I mean, they have to be related to their focus areas, but.
Coolest graphic.
I know. It's a, it's a, it's a fan. It's too much, it makes me sick looking at it.
Well, who's at Tulsa?
It just reminds me of like the educational acronym, like, just like, ah, it's too much.
There's a lot, they have a lot of pictures.
They have a, they have a Bro superintendent.
It's very, if you relook at it, I mean, like, I know all the superintendents in this thing, so this, they have a Brody.
Well, did you go through?
No, I did not.
So, you don't care?
I am not, I do not care for Brad Bro or any of his whatever, or what's the guy?
Ask you that.
Yeah, I'm not a fan. But my superintendent and people, many people thought I was because my superintendent in Philly is a, not only is he's like their.
So, you like this focus area?
But he's, there's only three of them, three Bro superintendents who have been considered successful. Only three. So, one of my, my mentor was hired by them to delve into their research on why they haven't been. Isn't that fascinating?
Uh-huh.
Probably their strategic plan. This woman is very smart, I mean, she's super smart.
I like page 19, how they have identified what they would use for measures for success.
Usually, they just disrupt and then there's nothing left. Usually they just disrupt and then there's nothing left.
You don't see it.
Okay, well, I didn't read all of these.
I think there has to be disruption, there has to be that.
Sure.
All righty, so let's move on. Can we, if you guys, oh, sorry. I got the high flyers in the back. The gifted and talented group back there. You are gifted and talented. You are. You are. You're the next tier, next tier. So I'm going to just kind of go through what I'm going to present and suggest as process. And it's, it was very open. Really want to hear your feedback. So when we're thinking about the new strategic plan, we're thinking about an aspirational future, what we want Omaha Public Schools to be. One of the things that I think we have a huge opportunity to do, to think about being a part of, is the workforce development aspect at the end of our process and the fact that Nebraska is going to need so many people to not just come here and live, but the people who are here to stay. So how do we, how are we a part of not just the public school vision, but also the vision for the city in terms of what the workforce needs are? And that's all along the continuum and thinking of all jobs that have living wages. Those are wages where you don't, you cannot live on my couch. So that's kind of what that means. You can live, work, have healthcare, raise a family on that wage. And then creating a compelling need, a case for the conditions that are needed. So we talked a little bit earlier here today about climate. We talked about resources. We talked about needing English language arts resources. All of that is a part of creating the conditions for success. And then that we have planned to support our future students' needs. So we're bottom-heavy. Everybody knows what that means? So, did everybody know what I mean by bottom-heavy? So we are going, the bubble is going to continue to flow through the why we need all of our new schools. And our senior classes are just going to get larger every year. And our kindergarten class next year will also be large. And then for the next five years, because we can always see the birth rates because they're five years, obviously, five years out as our kindergarteners start at age five. And then developing some key performance indicators and a portrait of an OPS graduate to measure success. So one of the things that I really want to be able to do is that when kids graduate, us be able to say to them, Amanda, you graduated from Omaha Public Schools. You know, what are you going to do next? You could say, I'm going to Disney World, but probably won't say that. But like, what did you get from Omaha Public Schools that makes you prepared to go on to do whatever the next thing is you want to do? So if it's that you got industry credentials because you decided, you know, I'm all into flash dance, I want to be a welder. We were talking about that earlier today. Somebody, flash dance was one of their favorite movies. I want to be a welder. And guess what? In school, not only did I do the regular curriculum, I also had an opportunity to participate in a career academy where I was able to do that. And you know what? I still want to go to college for a couple of years, but I also have this other thing that I got from, from students. What spurred me onto this was I met a student who was at South High School. His mother is, runs the PVA that's at Maple, 75th and Maple. I can't think of her name. But he is completely, he's an Anglophile. He is completely bilingual because he went through the dual-language program. And I met him and I'm like, because I went there to do an interview, you know, and I saw him and I was not anticipating that he was going to be able to speak Spanish like he did. But he is completely, and I thought, wow. And he's in all these AP courses. He's so bright and he got that other skill. So that's what I'm talking about. When students are a, when students, we have a portrait of a graduate, what does, do each of our, can each of our kids articulate that they got as a result? If it's, I wanted to go to an Ivy League. I got all the skills that I needed to be prepared to go to a super high, you know, super top-tier school. If it's, I want to go to, I want to play football at University of Nebraska-Lincoln. I got an excellent education and I was able to participate in sports that made me ready to, to be able to do that, to do it well. Whatever it is that our kids want to do. I think of kids at Burke or doing performing arts. I want to go to Juilliard. I got all the things I needed to do and I was prepared. If I want to, to be able to go there. So that's what we're talking about because that's our end game. And so developing our key performance indicators, we call it a scorecard here. Usually, a scorecard wouldn't have so much stuff on it because it's so, I don't know if you all, but like it's really even for me as an educator, like to pick up that, like I don't, I can't, it just hurts my head because it's too much information. I need to be able to say, what are the main things that you want me as a public person to know, as a member of the public, to know about how your, how good your schools are and/or areas where you need to improve very quickly? If I, you know, as a glancing document. So what we're anticipating is to have a board presentation on the 20th. We want to be able to get your input between now and then, an approval of a contract with partners. We were able to secure funding from Sherwood to pay for our partners. So we have, there's a few people that we are, two people that we already have spoken to and want to work with. The first one is a futurist. Her name happens to be Rebecca Ryan. She worked on the Chambers 2040 Plan. She's like super, super bright, like the smartest person probably I've ever met. And she does a lot of work with, this is futurism is basically their economist who literally, they just study the future as a science and can give us some information. One of the people that she said will probably work with her is a guy named Rex Miller, who is a futurist who works in the education field and really helps districts plan for the future. The second one, the second one is a lady that I have known for three or four, now maybe since, maybe five years. Her name is Dr. Keisha Ray. She's from Nashville. She's from Atlanta originally, but she's from Nashville, Tennessee. She has a very thick southern accent, which is fantastic. She is an individual that has worked as a chief academic officer in Nashville Public Schools as an H, as a chief of human resources, which is kind of, because she has such a background like that. And also has worked with the Center for Digital Ed. So she's very tied into the not just the brick and mortar, but also, well, not just brick and mortar, but also ed tech and how, what ed tech's impact is going to be on education moving forward. So those are the two people we initially talked about working with. And then when we interviewed for CFO, one of the people who interviewed is somebody, I actually, I'm not friends with him, but I didn't know him because he, we went to the same program. And he is super, super bright and is a person who works, does a lot of strategy work. He's currently working as a CFO in New Orleans, but does consulting. So he's somebody else that I may put forth his information to you as somebody we could potentially work with. So, Mr. Prom, you had a question?
Yeah, I was wondering if there's any requirements or conditions that are tied to the funding?
You know, not that I can, I have to, I have to, not that I can think of. I've got to know. Wow, no, no, I don't think so, no.
I just read that recently in another contract, a local county agreement. So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, not that I know of, but it's a good question. So let me, let me check into it. Can you think of?
I mean, we have to provide updates on where we're at with the project.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, definitely. And then so the first thing would be for our project folks to come in and kind of frame where we are. So one of the things that I thought was kind of interesting was some of the value statements that I saw in this. But before we move on to this, let's talk about which one of these that you, any aspects of the plans that you liked? And then we'll finish up with the timeline.
Amanda's going to present for us. You named Tulsa.
You had, which one did you have?
Tulsa.
Tulsa.
The one with the graphic.
Okay. What do you think is odd? They don't have kids over there.
Well, they got kids in it, like full-size pictures. I don't know. We thought that it was something that if you look at it, you kind of want to start, look like actually reading it. It seemed boring, it seemed engaging. We did note that it was very aspirational. However, their like key performance measures, starting on page nine, they're also really broad and they don't really show us what their, like what their goals are, where they're really coming from. And so it's probably a little bit too inspirational and aspirational and not enough of, yeah.
And they might have it somewhere else, but just, we're just going.
Right, from, we're just going from what we have here. We did like the, the addition of their values, especially right to the front. And that's something that Mark and I have discussed a lot about, like that equity piece. And so how are all of these key performance measures and these goals going back to these values? And that's something that we did, like.
Do you think, do we have the values statements here?
For ours? Do they have values or?
Kind of key tenets.
We have those principles.
Principles, right. Principles, yeah.
I actually like the values part. I think that's a pretty powerful, our first stage.
And it sets the tone issue.
But that's our principles.
Think so?
But we don't have this like joy. I don't think we need full-size pictures. Sorry, that's getting like, really?
All right.
Yeah.
So more specificity for the public.
Yeah, like that, yeah, definitely. Because this is something that we want not only ourselves to buy in, but our district and our district staff and our community and parents to buy in as well. I know when I'm looking at different organizations, and this is more on the nonprofit side, I am looking for something like this that I can look at and see like, where are they going? What are they wanting to do? Am I going to invest my money in donations? Am I going to volunteer? How am I going to help?
One of the things I was thinking about is I was meeting with Jeremy, who runs a career center, Jeremy Kelly, who runs a career center. And he was talking with me, this thing about workforce development. He was talking with me about these employability, all the employability habits that kids need to have. This is kind of like an overlap, like, because these are all things that you have to have really to become employed and stay employed. These, and I'm thinking about the overlap of that with the, so I just thought that was interesting. Next group? Thank you, it was fantastic.
You want to just all chime in?
Yeah.
All right, so.
A plus, I'm sorry, because I want to make sure I give everybody love, A plus. Now to the talented and gifted group.
So we visited St. Paul strategic plan. And one thing I love about the cover, not that this matters, but I just love how authentic the picture is with the kids. You see their bellies, you see their underwear. It's just kind of like, you know, they're, they're just kids and they didn't do any fixing up or Photoshop to it. So I love that because it actually shows their kids in real life form, you know?
Those are actors.
They're not actors. Do not destroy my portrait. You're like someone that ruined the movie for you, right? You just have like this perfect vision of me, like it's ruined it for me. One thing that stood out to us was that they have five specific areas that they focus on.
And they lay it out different ways.
They do. And I, I think the easiest thing to follow is their effort that they have for their strategic plan that you can follow on page six and page seven. And then also, what page is that on?
It might be a little overkill if they show you their, after the flow chart, then they go into each individual. I don't know if that's a little overkill, but.
And we did like on page 19, beginning on page 19, what their measurements for success is and how they relate that to their five-year targets.
I was going to ask, I wanted to ask you about their targets. Did you think they were too low? I, I don't have, I don't, I don't think that necessarily. I'm just curious what other people think.
For their targets?
Maybe they, maybe they want to make sure that they, that they. Maybe they, make sure they want to reach the targets so that they can at least show some growth, right?
But how does that make their community feel?
I guess that's one of the questions I have.
As a, if I was coming in as a parent, I would say, oh, your goal in five years is X. I think I'll try something different, right?
But you would also hope that their parents were a part of this discussion and coming up with this, so.
Though we do like the simpllicity.
Where you set the bar.
Like you just keep it simple, not overwhelming. You might not want the same. They have, but we liked the simpleness of it and keeping it tight. Ours is just a little out of control.
So you know what? I was wondering, I thought that that, when they had the anticipated percentage of change between the baseline, I thought they missed an opportunity to, when the things were really low, to say, hey, we're going to be at a hundred, we're going to use 100% change. Because that at least addresses part of what you're, at least, it's still not going to get, it's still not going to get them to in the nineties or in the seventies even. But they went even low on, when the baseline was low, they kind of stayed low with that. So I just wondered, I mean, and again, that whole notion of being, I was looking over, so whoever had said, I think it was Mark who had said, realistic, that that could be. But just as an observer, I thought, oh, okay.
But with looking at this, it helps us to know, or at least to think about our goals and what we want to be.
It's another way to think about it. And I, I think this guy is terrific, you know, and he's a, I think he's a terrific superintendent. And I think it's interesting that he went in that direction and he took a lot of time, like over a year, to write the strategic plan.
Really?
Because he got a little brief from his board because he decided to take longer to write the plan. So I just thought that was kind of, I'm just throwing that out there.
I guess he does say in his message, over the last year.
So that's kind of in. Just to give the board some things to think about as we go set. I think there's a lot, there is a lot of good in here. And he's got a huge, long plan that goes along with this, which I, this to me is kind of all you need.
And they also have a guidance page as well, right at the beginning.
And probably an equity statement, it's a big equity district. All righty, thank you. Yep, Lincoln. They have the very long plan.
I know, it took us a long time to get there.
Trash.
Once we realized that if we went online, which we did not do, we could have clicked down because we were feeling like, whoa, these are aspirational with no outcomes, right? And so if, as a member of the public, it would be hard to see that you were doing any outcomes. So from that aspect, I think that's a bit of a challenge if this is all you're giving out. I guess, I think about some of the strategic planning sessions I've been to at national and things like that. And I think thinking about ours was just massive, right? Tackling every single thing. And thinking about some of the other urban districts that I heard speak, really focusing on, I think, just personally, I think focusing on a few things and what the outcomes are going to be for that and not letting ourselves get too, I think maybe distracted is a good word, by lots of little objectives that we need to go after and strategies. So if we're tackling 100 strategies, then that one kind of falls off and then, oh my gosh, there's a fire over here. Or then somebody in the community said we should do this. So I think simplicity is something I would like to see. And I think with the challenges that lay ahead of us, financially, we need to be focused just on simplicity from a strategy standpoint and, and very focused on policy from a student achievement.
Makes a lot of sense because policy is all about, it's all about student achievement.
Right.
I thought, I would thought it was really interesting. And I love, I do, I love Steve Joel, but I thought it was interesting that the goal was to investigate. but I thought it was interesting that the goal was to investigate, so...
They were just interesting.
What did it say, to investigate what?
To investigate feasibility, so if you look under future-ready solos, that's the, the goal is just to investigate. Well, you could meet that on day one, because you could just go Google it and...
We did it.
And you investigate.
One hundred percent.
And so I thought it was interesting that that was their... I mean, it's a five-year plan, that's kind of their, at the end of five years, we will have investigated and decided, which means you would have to wait again another five years before you implement.
Well, I mean, if you look at it in a investigative language, I mean, there's, and we were looking at, as resources permit. So what, if you're going to do a strategic plan and you think that's really important, then that becomes part of what drives your budget. If you say, okay, this is really important to us from a strategic standpoint, then we should dedicate resources to it, right? Versus as resources, as resources permit, maybe we'll do this. I, so I don't, I guess we were kind of...
Well, then it gets back to you, the thing, okay, what are the things, what are our big rocks? Based on what we know we have. That we know that if we move those, it's going to help move a whole bunch of other things. The simplicity statement that you just made.
Is this their full plan?
This is their plan that they published for the public.
Well, you could go in and dine into each of these, we didn't do that, no.
Okay. So one of the things I think would be helpful, and I want to just open this up to the board, would be, nobody knows these individuals, would it be helpful to do some like three-on-three meetings? Or we could do some, we could do some Zoom meetings, where you could come here and we could do a Zoom meeting so that you could at least meet the individuals and ask questions that you may have, especially about the kind of the engagement process, which just gave me that. Kind of goes through here, where they would in March kind of frame it out, work with the Board of Education on who the participants should be and schedule, and obviously with the district, and then kind of move on to look at some of the outcomes which, sorry, this is a, this is a PDA. This, yeah, look at some of the things, remember we talked about, our ultimate goal is a portrait of a graduate, what graduates get, and then how kids are ready to either move on to whatever their post-secondary plans are, and then hopefully come back and work in Omaha, Nebraska, or in Nebraska more broadly, using these kinds of things, and then some workshops that they would have, which would be very similar to engagement sessions. And then to always make sure that the board has an update. Some additional workshops and working with, and again, those also include stakeholder sessions, and that's all the stakeholders that are creating what we want our aspirational future to be like here in Omaha Public Schools, the Case for Change, Drafted, Refined, and Completed. And then, I think this is the final, Future Labs, which is another way to talk about stakeholders, stakeholder meetings, and then to have a person working on the plan with the board in residence to support our efforts moving forward. So, questions?
Comments and concerns?
Yep.
So, I can only comment on the previous occurrence...
Sure.
One of the things that I struggled with was the initial person that worked with the board, and then like a year or so, like he moved to another organization, and then we had to contract, the organization that was doing the strategic plan had to contract out of him, and they still had their own people, and it just seemed like there was a disconnect between what his focus was and the person that came in.
So my feeling is...
I'm just saying, like whoever we worked with, I just want to make sure that, I mean, we can't prevent it, but something that we want to know that if you're the futures, whoever, that two years down the road, you don't just leave and that we still, I know that's kind of hard, but...
No, 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 I think that, I mean, I just think...
It just makes it difficult for us, at least for me.
Well, I think it's, and it'd be good questions to ask, but I think what it, what I see is this person helps you with development and writing the plan, and then the district has to own it and have their own person who is monitoring...
So you're talking about having somebody internal, okay. Because what we had, I mean, just what we had is we had an external.
Well, we did have external, but we also had an internal person that wasn't probably maybe following through on some of these. And so, right, right? So, and so, so I think externally, they were trying to hold us accountable. Internally, we probably, it was a struggle to, because there were so many things in the plan, and so then we had to pull back because, because principals got so stressed out. And so, that's where I bring in the simplicity, and as long as you have an internal person that is actually truly focused and monitoring, I think you have success.
I believe that we have, as a district this size, we have to have a person who's tied with research, who does, with our research office, who's monitoring how we're doing, who does strategy, and works with the board and the folks in the district to make sure these things are happening. So that's kind of the way we're looking at it. So I hear that you would like to have some sessions where you can meet and talk with these folks. We'll do it, I mean, and what we're going to, what we'll do, if it's convenient for the board, is set them up, and we could do it in the evenings, and you don't have to leave home. You just come right on Zoom, and we can have the sessions that way. That could be one way to do it, I'm all about, you know, so you can stay in your space, to kind of do them that way, we can have people in, but we can iron out some of those details and send those to you, and then find out what your, and then any other kinds of things that you want to see as a part of this, please let folks, let us know, myself or Matt, know, and we will certainly put that in. But I hear simplicity, I hear values and beliefs are important as a guiding principal, guiding principles to getting the document started, and wanting to be able to engage with the actual writers of the document. I think that's very, I think it's hugely important for the board to have some active engagement and feel like they're, they own it.
And we all know.
Yes, absolutely, yes, everybody, yep.
The only, the only other thing I would say is to think in, from a communication standpoint, of how do you communicate how we did on the lab strategic plan, right? Because we put a lot of effort and resources into that, and now we're moving into something new, and so I can see that that's going to be a communications component. And so to be thinking on the strategy of that as we move into this next phase.
That is a very good point. I feel like when we have the presentation, glad Monique is here, to think about, well, we didn't just stop that one because, you know, this, we didn't do that well on it.
Right.
We, we said, okay, this is where, this one has taken us to this point. Lots of great things happened, bonds happened.
Right.
Buildings happened, there's a lot of stuff in that.
A lot of its strategic...
A lot of stuff that was in the, in that strategic plan.
Transportation plan.
Yep.
There's a lot of positive.
Student assignment, a lot of stuff. So we'll, we focus on a lot of that positive stuff that happened, and then where we are from there. So we can move on to our next topic, unless there's anything else on that. Are there any other plans you'd like for us to look at as a group? Please send them, and we can include them in our weekly updates. Yes, Ms. Cracky?
I was saying, you were talking about simplicity, in looking, and I haven't read these, because I used to have seen them. I allowed it to be simple, and there can be options to go different directions, but the presentation itself, for anyone to buy into or look at as a public, I mean, the simple, simple one is better than showing a whole big thing. They're not going to...
They're not going to, they don't have time.
...buy it or anything.
I was thinking too, are we creating a strategic plan at a glance? I've seen some districts do that, have a one-pager that they can, and actually they have it up in all their schools. That way, it's a way to get schools to know they're a part of the thing, just by messaging. Okay, I think we're on to our next big exciting topic, which is looking at, OLSR's had a workshop, a couple of, what, last week, the last week, the twenty-something, the last week? Where, or the week before, where they had the actuary look at some scenarios, and there was representation, well, it's an open meeting, so if, I noticed in the room, OSAA was there, OEA, OEA retired, SCIU, a bunch of different folks were there at that. And what I wanted to be able to do is, you know, we have our stakeholders group, and giving, obviously, me some direction, and obviously for President Snow around any of these options that the board wants to say, maybe these are things that they want to support. And I'm going to kind of go through them, I may need Megan to help me, so if you want to come on up, Megan, to go through these. There are exhibits.
Before we start, would you mind sharing with the board information about the coalition?
Absolutely.
What they're tasked with and what they've done so far?
Absolutely, thank you, and I apologize because I think we had talked about that before. So, as we looked at this, the issue, the issue of OLSR's and all the different groups that are stakeholders in it, so there's, active employees are stakeholders, and I kind of, you know, represent active employees in the district, and the district as in terms of their fiscal, in terms of the fiscal responsibility for the district. Obviously, we have the Board of Education, who's also hugely interested and has responsibility as well. And we had OEA, because of their, those are their members. We have our retirees, and that, and from OEA retired. We have Service Employees International Union, that represents a lot of our non-certificated employees, craft people, and so on and so forth, and... Our Nebraska Educators Association. So, one of the things that we, when we were thinking about it as a team, we'll say our executive team, you know, we have this huge issue that we have got to figure out how we work together, and some small, some very, small-scale research looked at, when, when groups were able to work through these issues, they formed coalitions to work through these issues over years. They didn't do it in six months, they didn't do it in, you know, one year, they, you know, it took them years. And so we, you know, formed a group, we looked at, the first meeting, we, you know, I served as kind of the facilitator, and we kind of looked at it and said, it doesn't make, I'm one of the participants, it doesn't make sense for, for, for me to serve as a facilitator, nor is it my wheelhouse. And so we thought about who we wanted to have as a facilitator, and that's how we ended up with our very talented facilitator that was suggested to me by, actually several different people, about who could facilitate our meetings. And we started with, we have this issue, but we're going into a legislative season, and we also have all these other issues about which we share common interests. So, you know, when you have a hard rock, or big rock, or hard rock, you think about, okay, what are the easier things that we can, that we know that we agree on, that we don't really, you know, they're kind of like things that just based on where we sit in our organization's perspective, we are likely going to be, and so we talked about those things kind of during the first meeting. And, and actually, it's so funny, because in the first meeting, we never even had to talk about OLSR's because we only had an hour and did that. And then from then on, once we got our facilitator, you know, as a skilled facilitator, talking about, we have things that before we can even get started as a coalition, that we have to work on trust, because we have to trust each other, and there have been years where some of these groups didn't trust each other. There are, in terms of how we want to work together, being transparent during the meetings, which is something that, you know, people are working towards, because that's associated with trust. And that's kind of, you know, and then the next, the next, we've had three meetings. The next thing is to start bringing kind of solutions to the table. Now, we started, we did get some bills from Senator Holtermann that he put forward, and, you know, we've just started to look at those. I need to have direction from the board before I gave, I mean, I have my own kind of, where I think the district should, should sit, before we can move forward on us creating our positions on those. On those other easy things, like charter schools, we're kind of, we're all on the same page. Perhaps vouchers, we were all on the same, three or four things that we were like, we're all, you know, we all agree on those things. And now we're working towards some consensus on how we would like to move forward as a group, and how we would like to use our collective energy. We named ourselves, we're Better Together, that's our, our name. And now we're going to work on, work on some issues. Does that, and Mr. Snow is there, Megan's there, is that, do I have, do I have that, or is there anything else?
I think you have that there, I mean, I've expressed to others when they're requesting updates, there's really no update to give.
Yeah.
It's nothing against the coalition, it's just we haven't discussed anything, and this board hasn't taken any positions on things that that coalition, it would be interesting to see what. And at first, it seems like they were waiting for us to take a position, and then presented in that meeting, but assuming over the next couple of weeks, that coalition will be forced. I mean, they've obviously not to their members, we've never had the opportunity to actually come to you as a board and have a discussion, not just about the coalition, but about OLSR's and some ideas, because we just never had the ability to have a community, just to have an open discussion.
How often do you meet?
We meet on the second board meeting of the session. So, second board meeting of the month, right before, we meet like three-thirty to five. And we're actually meeting on Monday because we just got, we had, we knew we were going to have new information, and some hearings were going to come up. And John Lindsay is a part, I'm sorry, I can't believe I left him out. He's a part of the coalition, a very important part. And there are some things that are going to come up, and perhaps we need to be thinking about where we want to take a position. And because we didn't, some of the hearings will come up before that twentieth meeting of the Board of Education, want to meet on Monday. And we kind of, when we went, left the workshop last time, we were like, oh, okay, now we have something to look at. Now, we'll say, even thinking about the trust factor, was when the first meeting, they were thinking, well, the board, the district knows what they want to do, and we're like, well, no, we just, actually, we don't know what it is that we want, you know, want to do. We know that it's, this is causing us not to be able to do some things that we want to be able to do for our kids and for our teachers and staff, just more generally. So that's kind of where we are. So we, now we have this as a, something that we can look at. We also did get an update from the coalition from Minnesota, and how they worked through the process twice, because they did it in 2010, and in 2016, they had to come back to the table to work through their pension issues. And one thing that we did agree to was that whatever the solution was, it wasn't going to be, you know, if Megan and I are working on solutions, it's not going to be all of her, she's not going to take all the pain, you know, or I'm not going to take it, but that we would be thinking about that for the entire, you know, how the group, and I hate to even use that word, that's not the right word, but this, whatever the solution is that there is equal, there's... Shared response, that's right, there's shared responsibility for how that, how that comes out. So that's kind of where we, thank you. So the, you want to talk to these, or, okay, I'm going to have Megan speak through them.
I guess I just kind of have a quick question on that. What, and maybe that's what this process is for, what, what direction is the district looking to get from the board as far as what, I mean, is that, maybe we'll discuss, what sort of policy direction do you want to go to get some of the solutions to this issue?
Well, I think that's what the discussion is now, is what, how the, how the board wants to engage, does, do I have that? How the board wants to engage, well, it's great to have the board there, and it's so super important that the board is there at the meetings, because it means a lot to the folks that are there, because we know we can't really do anything without the board. OLSR's is in the meeting as well, I forgot, I think I mentioned, missed them as well. They're also a part, they come to every coalition meeting, Cecilia Carter, representing them, is also in the meeting as well, and has facilitated the workshops that they've had. So that's where we are right now. I think we're actually doing well on time, we're getting closer to them. This is the last topic? I'm Linda.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, Nancy.
I'm that you need to be there happy and people that are there. Can you find out anyone with real good financial expertise in the city community?
Well, I think that we are, we defer to the experts for financial, we're looking at how we're representing our constituents in that meeting and we're going to look to financial experts for financial advice.
And you're going to talk about who those people might be engaged with?
Right. Because we, we are not there yet, but that's a really good point. So I'm going to let Megan speak now. And if you still, you may have another question, but that's a, we all, I think everybody came to the table and said there are, we are not, that's not our, that's not our role. Our role is to represent our constituencies and their interests.
So what you'll see in this document, there are seven potential solutions that the OSERS trustees discussed. And they're not the only potential solutions that might be out there, but these are the seven solutions that they discussed. The first solution, and you'll notice there's two corresponding tables. One's A1, one's B1. So A1 and B1 go together, B2 and A2 go together. The difference between the pages is As refer to dollar amounts and B to percentages, just from a basic standpoint. There are some other differences in the table, but it gives you some basic understanding of what you're looking at. So the funded ratio on B is a percentage, the dollar amount is on A. The first one is a 30-year amortization rate. That 30-year rate, as you recall, the legislation changed several years ago. It allowed the Board of Trustees to set what that amortization rate is and they've determined to set it at a shorter period of time. It was previously in statute as the 30-year amortization rate. And so this would be taking it back to something that's similar to that. It used to be 30 years open. This is 30 years closed, but it's identical to the language that's currently in statute for the state. What you'll see in this one, this is a very good short-term fix from the ARC perspective because if you look down into 2020, it drops from the 21.3 for 19 to 16.3 the following year. So it's a significant short-term drop. And as you can see on the bottom, total cost for ARC payment for the district over a 30-year period is $2,661,000. So it's, it's a significant contribution over that 30-year period of time.
Maybe it's important to note, the far-right column is really that change column. That's really what I'm always looking at to see what, what are we short at the end of 30? Or what did we over? Or whatever the time period is.
Right. It doesn't get us to 100%. It gets us to 96%. So I think that's also important to note on B1. So that's your kind of short-term solution. That's one fixed. One of the other previous items that had been discussed is having a level payment for the district. And that additional contribution has been previously discussed to be about $20 million. And so that's kind of the number that they plugged in on A2. And then they've combined it with the 30-year rate. So this would pay the $20 million. As you can see, that significantly reduces the district contribution. What was stated though in the meeting is that every four to five years, they would reassess that and they would assess it at a different level. And so if the contribution wasn't enough for a period of time, you could see significantly increases in the ARC. So it could go from 20 million to say, whatever, 30, whatever. And so it, there would be substantial increases every four to five years when they would take that period of time. So that's A2. A3, it previously kind of been thrown out before, maybe some math was properly done to increase the district contribution, which is that currently in statute at 101%. They would increase that to 105. That really results in about $300,000. And so that's not really substantial as an additional contribution plus the 30-year. But it gets you to a little bit different result at the end. And so you can see what the total district contribution would be on something like that and kind of gives you an understanding of what that is like. And that's also on option number three. Option number four, again, different contribution, it's 105%. Full ARC payments, 30-year amortization starting at 1-1 of 2020. And that is those, what the result of that contribution would look like. You know, 90, we get up to 96% with those three things put together.
Would that necessitate these ones with 96% of changing the law?
Uh, yes.
Yes. You need to change the law and you also need to change the 80s now. Any of it's less than 100%.
Yes. Yes. A5 is the one-year suspension of COLA for retirees, a one-year delay for COLA for actives. So that basically means that we just, those people that are currently receiving COLA don't receive it for one year. Those individuals then are also delayed, everybody getting on the plan, they're delayed one year beyond when they would originally start. You can see that that has a significant impact. This is full ARC payments and a 30-year amortization. So that's the result of A5, it's issued in 96.1%. A6, a little bit different combination of things. One-year suspension of COLA for retirees. Actives require retiring post-2020 have a one-year delay or age 62 to start that COLA. Full ARC payment and 30-year amortization starting in 2020. It gives you kind of understanding of what the district's total line is on A6. B6 gets you to 96.3%. A7, one-year suspension of COLA for retirees. Actives retiring post-2020 has a one-year delay for those individuals or age 62 for COLA. This would combine then in the $20 million contribution. This also has the same, what I discussed earlier, is that every four to five years, that would be reassessed. And so that number could go significantly up. And so it may not, the total district contribution may not be accurately reflected below. This just assumes that it never changes. And then B7, and that gets you to 96.5%. So these are the options that they discussed. You know, we had previously discussed a bill that was before the legislature about de-risking. That isn't factored into any of this. You know, there would be, need to be more actuarial work done if there were more additional ideas. But these are the ideas that the trustees are looking at and considering and for consideration. And some are better in the short term, some are a little bit better in the long term and some, you know, have, you know, positives and negatives to them.
Question? Are we ready for questions?
Sure. This is an open discussion. It's not any, it's nothing.
I feel like this is heavily dependent in at least, maybe I'm wrong, just to some degree on the total payroll. Is that right?
Yes.
The total payroll seems to be ballooning exponentially from the year 2020, projected at 373, basically 374 million. Let's go to 2030, you know, 10 years, we expect the total payroll, well, we can go 2018. I mean, we're talking about a 50% or so increase in total payroll in 10 years. How realistic are those projections and where'd they come from?
Actually, it's fascinating. If you go back and look at the audit report from December, it shows you what total payroll was in like 2009 and what it is today. And it's unbelievable that percentage increase, it's for real. I just went back and looked at it. And it really is based on, if you give a 3% raise, you think about that over 10 years, that's, you know, jumping 30%. And if you're adding children and you added staff and, so two things that have an impact is obviously what drives down unfunded liability is, is payroll, right? That can have a significant impact on driving it down. And then obviously, what is the market value of assets? That has a significant impact on what that number really truly is. So, you know, I pulled because I hadn't looked at it for a long time, but I pulled the asset liability study out of, I don't know what I did with it, off of the that the Nebraska Investment Council did. And I think what's really fascinating, unfortunately, is that it really talks about, because we're in that closed period of 25 years, because this, we have 25 years, 19, and then in 25, we have to have it fully paid off. So what happens is the market value, that market unfunded and the actuarial unfunded will eventually have to intersect in order to get 100% funding. I mean, it has to happen. And so what they project is that our payments will be potentially two to three times what we're anticipating today. When, I mean, they put right in there, it could be two to three times. So if you're anticipating a $30 million payment, it could be 60, it could be 90, right? And that's probably fairly reasonable because what I did was I took a look, so the market value of the assets that they used for this analysis for 19, which would be January 1 of 2019, is $1,292. When you look back at where we were on September 1 of 15, we were at $1,211. If you look at where we were at September 30 of 18, it seemed reasonable, a million, a billion 276. But if the statement in Sunday's paper is accurate, that we have a 4% loss for the year, the number is really going to be 1. maybe 2, 1.19. So we're about $100 million off right there in unfunded from a market perspective. That $100 million has to get picked up. That would take us to a billion. If you just straight-lined that, it'd be a $40 million payment per year for the next 25 years, right? And so it obviously has to be, as you said, a give and take on everybody's part. So what does it look like if new employees didn't have COLA? What would it look like if there was delay in COLA? And then, and so the tough part for me, because we have this fiduciary responsibility to those who elected us, is to make sure that we don't put the Omaha property owners in a different position than the rest of Nebraska property owners, right? And so the rest of Nebraska will have their fund primarily paid off, their unfunded paid off in about 15 years. And so as a fiduciary, I have to say, in order for my constituents not to be unfairly treated within the state of Nebraska, I want to make sure that this is paid off too. And so how do, so the question is, how do you get to that place of 100% funding? Last year, we spent a lot of time talking about pleas, begging to get back to 30-year. That was completely, let's see, how do I politically correctly say that? It just didn't work out for us, right, to go from 25, uh, 26 to 30. And so I think if we could get to 30 actuaries, say you should be working toward paying it off. I mean, an actuary recommendation is that they truly do need to be paid off in 30 years. If, I applaud Senator Nordquist years ago for getting the state shorted up and help, and trying to help us get shorted up by the state contribution. But we also put our district at a risk if we don't get paid off, because what will happen is once the state is paid off, will there be the necessity for the 2% state contribution? Probably not at the state level, right? And then what does that do to OPS's 2% contribution? And will there be the necessity to have the high contribution rate at the state level? Maybe not so much. And so then what does that do to our employees versus the state's employees? So I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of gravity to this. I mean, it's a pretty serious situation. How do we get to full funding, whether it be at 25 years or 30 years, working with all stakeholders to get to that place where we all have a little bit of pain in this? Because that's how it's, that's how it's going to have to work out. And benefits may need to change on the COLA side. The state doesn't have COLA. Should we have COLA for our new employees? Should we have a delay for some of these other folks? And then straight-line probably just doesn't work. It, it would be great if you could do straight-line, but if you do straight-line, it's going to have to probably be at a higher rate than 20, taking into consideration the things that we've talked about. So I'm open to suggestions. I've obviously been down there for the last four to five years talking on these topics. We're better off today than we would have been had we not gotten changes made. So I think that's a positive that we should all take away from this. But more than likely, the unfunded market value will be $1 billion when we get to the end of this, or when we get the actuary report back in May and so, or in April or whenever she gives it to us. So what do we all need to be doing? Not only from a budgeting standpoint, but from assisting in this? Big question.
I raised that time, but I'm sorry. So for me, I would say, I think we have to put every option on the table. And I really do, just in my experience, just having the conversation with a coalition and others is that I think it's something that everybody has to be willing to come to the table on things that they're willing to put on the table to allow us to achieve, to stop this from continuing to go. And I think that is, everything that is in these options here, whether we move down to 96% or change it to 20, if we get 20 million across the board, I mean, right now, we couldn't find that. That means we would have to have staff come in to be able to work with, making different changes on some of the things that they receive or giving up some of the things that they haven't. And I think this is a great conversation. It'd be great to find out what everybody on the board is willing to have a discussion. Because if it don't, and that continues, cuts every year, we have great administrators and teachers start looking for other jobs in other districts because they don't see an end to this.
Even if they do see the end, are they going to last that long? You know, I mean, you're saying the end is suddenly years away. That isn't helping them at all. It's right now, right now, the second thing. And I don't know, are we going to be suggesting what we ought to be doing or what are we doing?
Right now, this is an opportunity for you to view the document and to make, and to make suggestions around where the, where, as we go to the coalition meeting, where the board would like to, to give to your, to President Snow, what he should bring to the table in terms of where the board is around. And it may not be any of these, you know what I mean? This is just, this is just one other.
It's a starting point for the discussion.
Right, just, right.
I mean, obviously, you know, I cut 20 million.
To me, okay, a couple of things. Back to my initial point. It's one thing to have had the, the growth projections over the last 10 years, but if those growth projections are the same over the next 10 years, then that's completely unrealistic. I mean, we already had one year worth of significant personnel cuts. So how could we anticipate the same amount of growth over the next 10 years? And so that's very concerning to me. Second.
A lot of those positions weren't filled, so that really wasn't, we didn't have many cuts.
What'd you say?
We didn't have nearly as many cuts.
No, I'm not talking about cuts. I'm talking about reductions. A cut, reductions unfilled.
Well, the budget, if you have a reduction.
Anticipation for that anyway, is that what you're saying?
Well, if you have a reduction of an unfilled position, you didn't, you didn't save payroll because it wasn't a person in that spot in the first place, right?
Okay. Well, that, that, even that being the case, I don't think you believe that we're going to be adding staff at the rate that we did over the last 10 years. I don't think anyone believes that. I hope they don't believe that. And so that's a real concern. I mean, do they? Do you? Do you think that, I mean, we're talking about the real number. Do you think that, I mean, we're talking about the real numbers here. And so, and these are just numbers, these aren't like, these aren't like, this isn't my understanding, this is the whole goal of the coalition, and there's probably a lot more work to do. These are just like ways to adjust the numbers and the dynamics to get there. This isn't.
This is just one, this is honestly, this is just one, this is just one piece of data that we received from the actuary that Holster's hired to do these scenarios. It's just one piece of data. It's just something for the board to consider. To Nancy's point, which I think was an excellent point, having a financial expert at our table is something that we will likely add as we move forward to help the coalition along. So I mean, I think that that's where, that's kind of where we are. It's just one, one piece of that. I want to make sure that you've had this, because you didn't have it.
And we ran last year the same set of scenarios with payroll cuts, which was something that I asked for, so that we could see if we had payroll cuts, what it was like, right? And so obviously, that wasn't a scenario that was, as works, it's not in this particular thing. I do think, really, to Nancy's point, and for the board in general, I think it's going to be critical as we head into the next, because if something doesn't happen through this legislative session, and we just don't know if it will or won't, I think it'll be really important to have some really knowledgeable, knowledgeable finance group of individuals who have worked on, whether they're corporate, have worked in school districts, to provide some set of guidance to Dr. Lowen as we move through these budget cuts, so they can actually evaluate some of the things and say, here's, because at some point, we're going to have, I mean, we really don't have choices, right? We don't have a whole lot of choices. We really can't go into our reserves without damaging our credit rating and having our bond rating drop, which we don't want to do from a taxpayer standpoint, which is a challenge, right? And we know that a levy override, based on the poll in the World Herald, probably isn't an option, right? So I think we have to be thoughtful on that.
I would agree. I think there are people in our business community and our community that obviously are experts at this and that we can rely on to help guide Dr. Lowen in making some of these decisions, because obviously, they've dealt with issues amongst themselves, well, I'm talking about rare as a whole, to help this board make some of those, I wouldn't say make, but recommend some of those tough decisions that we might have to make. But we also need the coalition to be a part of that as well, because we all need to be on the same page.
And we may need some assistance from the legislature. So if we're a united group, folks that are stakeholders, then we have a better chance.
Coalition, I think, that really.
How many, how many times has the coalition met? You might have said that, right?
December, January.
Three, four. Which, to your point, a lot more work needs to be done and will continue. Like you said, it's the coalition's set for.
Ever.
Long-term.
Long-term, right. It's not something that we're going to solve in four meetings.
Not like a six-month, year commitment.
No, no.
You've not emailed them.
So it's, we're going to, you can, yeah, it's public, people have it. We're going to transition. Thank you for your attention. I really appreciate it. These are some pretty weighty topics, strategic planning and this. So the next step is, Linda's going to close out. We're close to our, it's almost 5 o'clock.
So, real quick before we move. I guess it's, and I know we can't, we're not taking any position on, but that is, what is your opinion on that idea of having a group like that?
You mean what? The finance, I'm thinking, I'm thinking from more from a budget cut standpoint to bring ideas back and say, hey, here's, here's some areas of saving. I think this is going to have to be truly the coalition and the Board of Education coming together. I don't know that.
I just don't, I don't think that, I think having those folks as partners is wildly helpful from around the state. It's well, it's well received and they feel, and they have skin to gain, right? But you're not asking about that. You're asking about cuts.
Final deep breath. It's Friday. So I want you to go to the slide that says, how do you view yourself as a leader? I have a different layout on my slides. Yeah, there you go. Louie, it's got it. Okay? I want you, in the bottom of that, how do you view yourself as a leader in today's meeting? I want you to add those words, right? How do you view yourself as a visionary leader in the discussion today? And I just want you to take just, just two minutes. So I like for a board, when you're dealing with all the topics that you're dealing with in the course of an afternoon like this, to kind of set your tone at the beginning, kind of set your mindset around what it is that I'm here to do. And we said there were three things statutorily and our circle of impact, right? Those factors that we use to see if we're on track, but the three things being.
Superintendent, budget.
Nice job. Superintendent, budget, policy. And I want you to think through the, through that, as you think about what you went through here today, the conversations that you had. I will give you as an observation, back row observation, that I really liked, I liked several things that I saw in your conversation today. I heard policy questions during ends gaps. I heard several people asking policy things. What's our policy on this? What do we, how do we know what our, how our policy impacts? I heard a curriculum adoption policy question and timeline. I heard a budget impact with regard to textbook adoption and prioritizing that, right? I heard really good questions around policy and budget. So I want you to just take a minute, and I want you to think about all the topics that we, you talked and you covered today, and I want you to ask, look at those questions. How do you view yourself as a leader in today's meeting? And how did you view yourself as a visionary board leader in the discussion today? What did you contribute?
We'll have to share these.
Just you.
Since you asked. How did you view yourself as a leader in today's meeting? Got a lot of writing going on, so somebody needs to share something with me.
So are we supposed to train, or are we supposed to talk about how you view yourself?
Yeah, just tell you, view yourself. Yeah, it's a reflection.
So I, as a leader, I'd say I tried my best, or tried to keep the conversations on, or pull some people out of their shells, or pull everyone out of their shells to be a little bit more honest and forthcoming, and not try to dismiss or cut conversations off, even though, you know, we had a time limit.
Sure.
Just try to assess the room, and if people wanted to continue, try to encourage.
Okay, very good. I heard you acknowledge Mrs. Gauding when she asked you in further discussions about the differences between workshops and retreats, and her question there, I heard you acknowledge her and validate her. So that's a great leadership quality, is to validate those who you're serving with, their concerns, whether you agree with them or you don't. You validated her. So that's something I observed. Okay, who else wants to share?
I will.
Yeah.
I said, sometimes in being a leader, you observe and just try to take it all in. And some of this was very new to me. Like, I was telling Siobhan, I've never dealt with strategic plan much.
Yep, yep.
So very new to me.
Yep.
But just trying to stay engaged and learn as much as possible.
Absolutely. No, so I observed you in that process when conversations were happening, that you were.
It was heavy.
Yeah, you were, you were engaged. You were looking, you were taking notes, you were active in that process. And we're going to, we're going to get, I'm going to close with just a couple of things that I want to reassure you, you're exactly right. Leaders aren't always the ones talking, right?
They're great listeners.
Yep, that's right. Anybody else? How about, it relates to yourself as a visionary board member or leader in the discussion What visionary talk, conversation did you, were you a part of? What, how did you contribute to helping the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education set vision, cast vision, be visionary? How did you do that today?
I think we all did, when we had the discussion about the strategic plans and what we would like to have in our, in the process and in going about it. I think it was nice that we were all able to break into small groups, have that discussion, and then come back and collectively discuss what it is that we would like to have in our s.
Absolutely. That was great conversation. I liked the questions that were coming out of the dashboard also, on, you know, just what did that mean, and how will we track that? Right, how will we look at it? Those are the kinds of questions that lead you to be in pursuit of a vision, and be excited about that vision, like Nancy Cluckbo, right? Okay, here's what I want to close with. I have a slide here that says, dispelling the myths of board leadership. I wish I could dispel them for you, right? What I want you to hear in this is, first and foremost, I'm really, really proud of you guys. This was a lot of content to get through today. And you kind of had some big stuff at the beginning, had some questions on whether you should even be talking about it, right? And you talked through it. There was some compromise that actually came about in making that decision to move forward, putting some limits on it so that you understood what your role was in this today, so that you didn't get in the way of yourselves by doing something you shouldn't be doing, having a great conversation about the intention behind it, really pushing on yourselves in that area. So I commend you on that. You're not going to be perfect. There's an expectation out there that, that we have all the answers when we sit in these meetings, and we don't. We're searching for them. It's a lot easier when we do it together, right? When we lift that together. What I wanted to spell for you, and leave, leave you with some positivity of the impact that you had here today on her, right? On those who know me, my mantra is, one throat to choke.
That's great.
Take note. And I would say that she knows that's my mantra, right? One throat to choke.
Oh, it's not attacking that.
I know you weren't, right? Boom. So here's, here's what I will tell you. Here's what I will tell you. Board leadership is not a rare skill. These are the myths that are in your pack. It's not a rare skill, right? There are all kinds of visionary leaderships in everyday lives, and you're one of those as a Board of Education member. It's not rare for you to be in leadership. Board leaders are born, not made. That's a myth, right? Is leadership innate? Is it learned? It's an accepted view that today, that it is both. Most people possess some leadership qualities that can further develop leadership skills if they choose to do so, okay? By doing this exercise, going through this, you're choosing to do that. Effective board leaders are charismatic, to your point. Sometimes they're quiet, and they take it in.
Which I'm not.
And they're introverts, right? And they think before they speak, or they ask questions different ways, right? So don't assume that charisma has anything to do with it. Board leadership exists with only the officers of the board, bunk, right? You all nine have an absolute responsibility every single moment to be in leadership. Now, you lead as a board when you act as a board. As an individual board member, are you, are you anything? I like to think you are, right? We all like to think that. But at the end of the day, it's the nine of you, collective voice, speaking together. That's the power in being a board. Board leaders control, direct, and prod. Sometimes it feels like it. Sometimes it feels like it. But the best boards, the most effective boards, the boards, I think you were reading a little bit from the Iowa Lighthouse study, am I correct? Effective boards have shared leadership. They don't have, it's not a top-down, right? And so I'm leaving you with some homework. You're so mean, Linda. And there really won't be any follow-up, per se, from me, except I might, I might follow up with an email to see, kind of debrief with you if there's any questions. But the last few sections of this are a couple more, a couple more sets of questions that really are for you to internalize and think about. I want you to know, every single moment you're sitting in this board seat and doing board activity, I want you to know your why. I want you to know why you're a Board of Education member. I need you to know that. Your kids, this district, need you to know that. Because when it gets tough, and it will, it'll get tougher than just the conversation, there'll be actual decisions on these conversations. When it gets there, you need to know that why intrinsically, okay? And so complete those questions. The last thing you have there is an, is an exercise that I want you to think about, and I've given you a little bit of information to read, there are controllers versus empowers. I have tried very painfully sometimes to not want to control the outcome, right? Sitting with people who are go-getters, let's go make it happen. Sometimes it's not from my control. Sometimes there's a process that has to happen, right? That can be frustrating, it can feel isolating, right? I want you to, just because I believe in you, because I believe in each of you as Board of Education members and the stuff that you do, day in and day out, I want you to do this last page, the last slide there, it's personal behavior analysis. What kind of controlling behaviors do I exhibit as a board member? What kind of empowering behaviors do I exhibit? Actions I will take to become more empowering. The goal is to work with this team. I sat out in the hall while you guys were doing ledge. You've got some pretty cool people, just in this building. I've been in some of your other buildings, right? You've got some pretty amazing, these people that came in presented, holy buckets, right? And so we owe it to them for that work, to make sure that this structure and what we're doing, and the lift that we are doing corresponds with that work. Empowerment is what we're after, okay? Back to Ben's point, the beginning of the meeting, how do I hold you? Who's to say? I'm supposed to tell you what you're to do or what? There's nothing to say it. There's just this ethic as board members that we develop with one another. I want that for you. I want that for you, because I know what it can do. The Lighthouse study tells us longitudinally what it does. We're more effective, there's a better system, right? It's a higher quality delivery. And that goal in your strategic plan about this vision for these kids and what they want to do, you're going to contribute to that. So it's been an honor to be with you today, just to spend a little bit of time with you. I am here however you need me, whatever you need. Everybody has my email. I'm here to support you, and want you to know that the work that you do is incredibly important, and it matters. And I'm proud of you for today, and whatever you need going forward, you let me know, okay? Great job today, guys.
Thanks very much.